Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order and welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Planning Commission. We will be having only one set of meetings tonight and we'll be considering three items. The first will concern nonconforming lots and new modification of use, sorry, for the R-2.7 district and other issues. The second item has to do with modification of use standards for swimming pools, community and semi-public, commercial, et cetera. You'll hear more about that later. And the third item has to do with requests to authorize advertisement of the four-mile-run valley area plan, which has been, is it two years in the making? Long time, so we move along with that. If you'd like to speak on one of these items, please make sure to fill out a speaker slip and hand it in to Ms. Johnson or clerk, and you must hand the slip in to the clerk before the item is called. The clerk will call your names two by two. Please come up when you hear your name called and you'll speak in the order that your name has been called. I'd also ask you now to remember to turn off your cell phones and do keep them away from any microphone as there can be feedback. With that, I will ask the clerk to call the first item.
Item number one, ZOA-2018-01, Proposed Amendments to the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance for Nonconformities. We have Kelly Brown, our planning staff, to present this item.
Yes?
Okay.
I'd love to hear from you. Our procedure has been that clerk calls your name and I'm all ears.
Okay, great, thank you. So by way of background, in January of this year, the county board directed the county manager to develop a zoning ordinance amendment that would provide new flexibility for additions and expansions to two-family dwellings. The limited scope of this proposed amendment would permit additions to nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in R-2.7 zoning district. The 50% cap on additions would still apply. Permit structural interior alterations to nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in the remaining excluded R and all RA districts. Remove the mismatch that currently exists between the zoning ordinance text and the longstanding ability to build on nonconforming lots substandard in lot area and/or lot width, and then incorporate clarifications and formatting refinements to this article of the zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment would not introduce new standards for the development of two-family dwellings. New standards are recommended as a potential future phase to also include addressing additional issues for two-family dwellings, such as the cap on the size of additions to two-family dwellings and opportunities for two-family dwellings in the R-5, R-6, and R-8 districts. So by way of overview, what I intend to share with you tonight is some background on current zoning regulations for nonconforming lots and dwellings, the exception process for making changes to nonconforming lots and dwellings when an applicant is seeking to do something that's not allowed by the zoning ordinance. I'll go through the issues to be addressed through this zoning ordinance amendment, which include exterior additions and expansions in the R-2.7 district, structural interior alterations, and the technical update for nonconforming lots. I'll provide an overview of the proposed amendments and the timeline we've been following to this date and moving forward. So this chart provides a snapshot of the zoning ordinance provisions related to nonconforming dwellings and the ability to make changes to the nonconforming dwellings. So just moving through the chart, one-family dwellings do have some opportunities to make changes, both interior and exterior. In single-family districts specifically, they may make interior and exterior modifications by right. One-family dwellings in the two-family zoning district R-2.7 currently can only make interior modifications. One-family dwellings in townhouse districts and RA districts do not have an opportunity to make any changes. Two-family dwellings may only make interior modifications in single-family districts and the R-2.7 district. Two-family dwellings may not make, nonconforming two-family dwellings may not make changes if they're located in a townhouse district or an RA district. So if there is a property owner seeking to make a change to a nonconforming dwelling in one of those districts where the zoning ordinance currently does not provide that ability, there is an exception process. An applicant may make an application to obtain a variance or a use permit for placement if needed from the Board of Zoning Appeals. It is typically a 90-day review process for that to occur, and just by way of background, there are some differences between a variance and a use permit. A variance is something that really is what you would seek if you would experience practical difficulty or undue hardship in not being granted that variance from the provisions in the zoning ordinance. The spirit of the zoning ordinance must still be observed. There must be accommodation for public welfare and safety and no adverse effects on abutting properties or the neighborhood. A use permit for placement, the Board of Zoning Appeals may grant a use permit, and this has somewhat different criteria. Some of the criteria is similar, no adverse effects on health and safety of neighborhood residents, no adverse effect on neighborhood properties, no conflict with any of the plans for the county, but it doesn't connect with that hardship threshold that's really needed to obtain a variance. So that being an overview of the background, the current situation for nonconforming one and two-family dwellings, there are three major issues that we're seeking to address with this zoning ordinance amendment, and the first one is related to exterior and expansions and additions. So in summary, exterior expansions and additions are not permitted in nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in two-family and multifamily districts without a Board of Zoning Appeals variance. Nonconformities in these districts are very common, thus a variance is difficult to justify. This is a common housing type of value to the county, particularly the two-family semi-detached housing type, and nonconformities in semi-detached housing in R-2.7 zoning district is almost universal. So that being the case, our proposed solution is to remove limitations on adding to or expanding nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in the R-2.7 zoning district. The 50% cap on the size of the additions, when you're on a lot that does not meet minimum lot area requirements, a building height would still apply. This is a map. This is something that we shared at ZOCO back in July that shows where the properties are located that are affected currently and that would obtain some relief through this zoning ordinance amendment. The properties indicated in red are one-family dwellings in R-2.7. Those in blue are two-family properties, and you can see that there's not a small number of these dwellings, almost 1,500 two-family dwellings, and they really are spread throughout The second issue to be addressed with this zoning ordinance amendment is related to interior structural alterations. So currently, interior structural alterations are not allowed in nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in townhouse and multifamily districts. They are allowed in single-family districts. Nonconforming one and two-family dwellings are frequently interspersed throughout single-family neighborhoods, and this is, again, a housing type of value to the county. So the proposed solution is to remove the limitations on structural interior alterations in the remaining excluded R and all RA districts to create a common standard for this housing type throughout the county and provide more flexibility to make interior improvements in this housing type. And this is a map that shows where one and two-family properties are located in RA districts. You can see that it's a smaller number, but it still provides a needed relief for these housing, these dwellings throughout the county. And this is the location, also a small number of one and two-family properties located in the R-10T and R-1530T zoning districts. You can see most of them are located north of Boston. So finally, the third issue to address through this zoning ordinance amendment is for nonconforming lots. And the issue here is that a strict interpretation of provision 1611 does not align with the county's administration of this section, which is that a lot that's substandard in lot width and/or lot area may be built upon. And so a technical update is needed here to align current and longstanding practice with the text of the zoning ordinance. So that was, as I just mentioned, that would be the solution, to remove that mismatch and align the text with the practice. So just to be very specific of what we're proposing in terms of amendments to the text itself, what we are recommending is to permit one and two-family dwellings in the R-2.7 district to make additions and expansions to nonconforming dwellings. The 50% cap on additions would still apply to two-family dwellings. This amendment is located in the proposed 1624E of the zoning text which you've been provided. There's also an additional amendment we would make to 1624E1, which would permit two-family dwellings, in addition to one-family dwellings, which currently have this provision, to make an addition over an existing area of encroachment and to require a setback. So what this does is it enables a change in policy in which one and two-family dwellings in R-2.7 would now be able to make additions and expansions where they currently are not allowed to do so. It retains Board of Zoning Appeals review, excuse me, Board of Zoning Appeals review for use permits for placement when needed and a variance for additions that exceed 50% of the floor area of the existing house. It provides near-term relief for existing property owners that currently are facing a challenge in moving forward with their projects, not being able to obtain a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals due to the common condition of their lots and their dwellings being nonconforming. The amendment for interior structural alterations is proposed to permit nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in the R-1530T and R-10T and all RA districts to make an interior structural alteration. This is in the proposed 1623B found in the zoning text provided. This also enables a change in policy so that one and two-family dwellings in all R and RA districts will now be able to make interior structural alterations by right. This supports nonconforming single-family and two-family dwellings having this flexibility to make changes where they are currently not allowed to do so. A variance would still be needed to make a change to a dwelling located in the P.I. and C., the Public, Industrial, and Commercial Districts. So finally, our last amendment is this technical update related to nonconforming lots, to change the wording in the zoning ordinance text to allow for "and/or" lots substandard and "with" an area or area so that there's no confusion with how nonconforming lots can now be built upon. We also made some organizational changes to try to improve the clarity of Article 16 by moving some sections around reorganizing them so that all relevant provisions would be grouped by topic, by theme, whether that be repairs, or maintenance, or damage and restoration, or additions. We also just cleaned up some references to make them more consistent. And I think with that, we have come up with, you know, what a new process would look like moving forward for an exception. So if you're requesting a structural alteration in any R or RA district now, you would be able to move forward with a by-right review process. On the bottom there, that bottom sequence, if you're requesting an exterior expansion for a one- or two-family dwelling in the R-2.7 zoning district, if you are not seeking to encroach upon your setbacks any further than they've been encroached upon, and the addition is less than 50% of the floor area of the existing dwelling, then this too would be now a by-right review process. Alternately, if you are requesting to exceed your setbacks, you would still need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a use permit for placement, or if you're requesting to exceed the 50% cap on the size of the addition, you would still need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance. But this is the new process moving forward that would occur with the adoption of these So as you recall, we were at ZOCO two times, first in May to share the scope of work for this amendment, then we came in July to share the proposed amendments. In September, we received authorization to advertise the proposed amendments from the county board. We're here tonight, and we are hoping to go to, we're planning to go to the county board in October 20th for final consideration. So with that, the staff recommendation is to amend 16-1 and 16-2 to expand flexibility for nonconforming lots and one- and two-family dwellings, clarify the rules for building on nonconforming lots, and expand the number of zoning districts in which nonconforming dwellings may make interior and exterior alterations and expansions. We would also recommend the editorial amendments for organization and clarity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers on this item?
We have one speaker this evening, John Quirk.
Hello again. I rise in strong support for this zoning amendment as it relates to R-2.7 districts. Most of you know me by now, so thank you for all your hard work and hours on this, and also sorry for all the work and hours on this. I think this fits seamlessly with what the county board is trying to do with respect to the missing middle, and more broadly, and perhaps more importantly, I think in learning more about this, you know, we've come to learn that this also writes a historical wrong going back a few years, and so I'll be brief. I just want to say thanks. We strongly support this. We've garnered the support of a few hundred families online, and so I think, you know, this stands to benefit roughly 2,000 homes in the county that will help them, and ourselves included, stay in this county for many years to come and continue to be members of the community, and so we urge your support, and thanks.
Well, I just want to thank you for your patience and for your attention to the process. I think it was really a very good process, so I'm glad we've come to this moment. Thank you. I don't think there are any commissions on this issue, so the matter is now with the commission, so I'm going to turn to Commissioner Geren for her report, ZOCO report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for the excellent report and your patience walking us through this twice over the last few months, and thank you, Mr. Quirk, for giving a human face to this issue and sharing what it's like to deal with it operationally. I sent my report of this to all of you via email, and I'll just summarize it quickly, reminding you that we did discuss this twice. We had two meetings and both were well-attended, with at least eight of us at those, as well as members of the public, so I think it's fair to say that we have had a robust discussion already. So we heard this at our May 16th and July 24th meetings, and the proposed changes are meant to address zoning barriers that limit reinvestment and renovation opportunities for most of the county's two-family dwellings and some of the county's one-family dwellings in two-family zoning districts. And again, the proposed changes include removing the restrictions on additions and/or expansions for nonconforming one and two-family dwellings in R-2.7, removing the restriction on interior structural repairs and alterations for nonconforming one and two-family dwellings and the remaining excluded R districts and all RA districts, aligning the zoning ordinance language with the longstanding county practice, as Ms. Brown pointed out, the "and/or," it can be "or," not, it doesn't have to be both now, and some technical updates, and you'll see that if you looked at the changes to the zoning ordinance, some things are moved around and clarified. So the background on this is that there are many one-family and two-family dwellings in Arlington that do not conform to the zoning ordinance requirements in terms of setback, lot width, lot area, and off-street parking space. And this, like many of the issues that we faced with the zoning ordinance over the last couple of years, is largely a function of the fact that these were built before the current zoning ordinance, so they were already there. And the current zoning ordinance limits the ability to make changes to these and other nonconforming structures, so property owners can seek relief from these standards with approval of a use permit from BZA. But recently, the BZA has started to deny these variance requests in which the property owners must demonstrate a hardship because they were too recurring, too frequent, and they represented less of an occasional hardship and more of a recurrent background condition. And that's why we started to hear this issue back in the spring. So an amendment to the zoning ordinance was considered. Note that, as Ms. Brown underscored, the BZA variance will still be required if an addition or an expansion that is greater than, a proposed addition or expansion that is greater than 50% of the existing building is proposed. And in this case, the property owner would still have to demonstrate a hardship, but as we have discussed in the prior meetings, that is sometimes as simple as saying, "Our dwelling is so small and it needs to be bigger." But this gets to an issue that we faced as we were talking about concerns. So just as some general background, and we did discuss this in our meetings, many jurisdictions tried to phase out older nonconforming uses, but staff and ZOCO members generally agree that these two-family dwellings are a valuable and scarce form of housing in the county and should be preserved and encouraged. And given the large numbers of these nonconforming dwellings, our ZOCO committee was very supportive of the intent to create a new approval path for expansions and additions for applicable two-family dwellings by creating these by-right opportunities for exterior improvements. We were also supportive of the outreach that was done for this proposal, of the process for discussion, of the scope. This was an RTA from the board in September, and then review of the proposed amendments, and of the proposed amendments are changes to the zoning ordinance language. Ms. Brown handed something out today that further clarifies the changes to the zoning ordinance language. So the concerns that we faced when we discussed this were, what are the implications of preserving these existing one- and two-family dwellings in areas that on the GLUP are envisioned for greater development potential? And we ended up feeling that while the GLUP, it gives us a vision for some areas, it's not always a precise, permanent vision. It does change over time, and there are so many homes that fall into this category that we felt this was okay. We could live with maybe being out of conformity with the long-term vision for the GLUP, knowing that we have people who are living there now, and as Mr. Quirk drew our attention to, this is sort of our missing middle. Another issue that was raised was why not change the R-2 standards now so that most of the nonconforming lots and dwellings are conforming? This was too broad for us to consider in this process, but we have raised it with staff, and it's something that might come back to us. And then how might we mitigate any impacts on the surrounding properties that could occur now that this is by-right development? And I think in some ways, this is why BZA would still be considering anything that's a proposed expansion larger than 50% of the existing dwelling. So homeowners would still have to go to BZA for that, and as well, if, Ms. Brown, could you clarify what else they'd have to go back to BZA for?
So they would still need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they wanted to seek a use permit to grant an exception for placement, for setbacks, and then, as you mentioned, if they wanted to exceed the 50% cap.
Thank you. So just to clarify, there's still some requirements there, but for most of these homes, this would be a new path for by-right expansion or additions. And we felt that, given the county's interest in maintaining this type of housing, we were overwhelmingly in favor of facilitating this sort of homeowner investment in their existing homes and the county's stock. I open it up.
Well, let's just see if we can list some agenda items for discussion. Would you suggest that what you've got on page two is good, or can we start with that and then go further?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that we have very robustly discussed this. Well, we actually had two ZOCO, full ZOCO meetings on this that were, in fact, so well-attended that I, well, I would welcome hearing what my fellow commissioners have to say about this. I'd be surprised if there was substantial discussion about these issues at this point, so perhaps we should just see if there is any.
All right, then, per your suggestion, are there any questions or comments on any issue?
One minor question. I'm curious how many projects approximately are caught, just for context, are caught in this limbo where BZA refuses to hear them?
So we have done some research on cases over the past two years, and it seems to average out to about one case every other month, that an application had been coming forward to seek a variance. So what we understand is that at some point toward the end of 2017, the Board of Zoning Appeals determined that this type of request for a variance was actually quite difficult to justify considering how common the situation is. So it was at that time that there was effectively a stop on processing these types of applications until a zoning ordinance amendment could be developed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Question, comment? I actually have a question. So you would have to seek a variance if your planned alteration would exceed 50% of the building, is that the footprint or the GFA?
It's 50% of the floor area of the existing building as of 1950, July 15, 1950.
Uh-huh. The other question, and then you would have to seek a use permit for placement, that has to do with setback.
Correct.
Can you, in a sentence or two, tell me the difference and why you'd use one process or request one process for 50% cap and one for placement?
Okay.
Trying to distinguish in this case between the variance going forward with a variance request and a use permit request. I know you had a wonderful slide, it was Slide 6.
Sure. So there might be an application coming forward where the applicant is looking to do a rear addition, and they want it to run addition, and they want it to run flush along the back of the house. But a portion of the existing house may be encroaching their side yard setbacks. So to allow for that new addition to be flush all the way to the edge of the structure, they would need to seek a use permit for placement to exceed their side yard setback. So this is different from if you're building above. That's actually part of the amendment that we're recommending, that you'd be allowed to build above an existing area of encroachment. But if you're trying to, if you're seeking to further encroach with your rear addition, then you would need a use permit.
I see. Okay. That's enough. I have many other questions, but I'm sure it's not worth going into now. And my final question is, are you considering, and I don't exactly recall the discussion from the ZOCO meeting, are you considering changing R2 standards now to make nonconforming lots conforming? Is that a?
It's something that certainly could be studied as a Phase 2 of this effort. I think there's a number of issues that could be addressed in a Phase 2. For example, there are two-family dwellings located duplexes, for example, where they're one unit on top of another, located in single-family districts, R5 primarily. We did not address those through this amendment. So those could be looked at, and we could look at the cap on GFA. I think that would be tied to looking at the standards for the district itself. So that is certainly something that could be done in a Phase 2.
Very good. If there are no more general comments, then Commissioner Hughes.
I just wanted to follow up with staff with the side yard setback. Was staff implying that that's not an acceptable variance for the BZA to consider in that statement? Or were they just acknowledging that it would be something for BZA's consideration?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, I think I'll turn to Commissioner Geren for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the Planning Commission recommend the County Board adopt the ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance, Section 16, specifically 16.1, nonconforming lots, and 16.2, nonconforming buildings and structures. To clarify provisions for nonconforming lots, expand the number of zoning districts in which nonconforming dwellings may make interior and exterior alterations and expansions, and to make other editorial amendments for organization and clarity as shown in Attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schröll?
Two seconds.
And a third. Is there any discussion? Any amendments? If not, hearing none? All in favor? I think we're unanimous. All opposed? No abstention? Very good. There you are. Okay. Madam Clerk? Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Madam Clerk, will you call a second item, please?
Item number two is ZOA-2018-02, Amendments to the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Community Swimming Pools. We have Nick Rogers, for the first time, at our Planning Commission to present this item.
Welcome, Mr. Rogers. We are all ears.
Ms. Johnson, Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you so much. The scope that we started out on with this zoning ordinance amendment on your agenda tonight, per direction from the county manager's office, was twofold. We were seeking to identify ways to both modernize and introduce flexibility into our standards pertaining to community swimming pools. But we also wanted to be very cautious about our existing operators, and I'll speak about those briefly in my overview, to not further complicate or create some of the nonconforming issues that you heard about, particularly in the last presentation. And so today, I'll give you a brief overview of the background of our research that we've been focusing on the past couple of months, a few of our key findings, and then I'll round out with the staff recommendation on the language. As you saw from the staff report, the focus of this study was community swimming pools. And we have a variety of different swimming facilities throughout the county, but those are in apartment complexes, those in private residences, even in hotels. Those were excluded from the scope of our study. We're focused solely on the community swimming pools. Currently, we have, in operation, five community swimming pools throughout the county. You've seen those here, and we shared this map with you at the ZOCO meeting back in September. The history on this is in the background of your staff report in one of the attachments, but in short order, you saw that this is a use that was essentially brand-new to Arlington County in the 1950s. And as we had several operators come online, in quite short order, there was a consensus amongst the community sentiment that we needed something unique and something tailored specifically to control for land use impacts associated with this use. And so the County Board adopted a zoning ordinance amendment in 1956 to respond to that consensus. And the amendment was quite extensive, as you saw, as we outlined in the staff report. This has always been a use that has been approved through the County Board's use permit process, and there's nothing that we've proposed today that would change that. Moving after that zoning ordinance amendment, we did have two other operators come online. You saw from the development history in the background that even with those new zoning standards, the Board of Zoning Appeals has reviewed periodically over the years variances from those standards and commonly approved those variances, typically for either complete waivers or modifications of fencing requirements, or some sort of relief from the setback standards, which we identified in our key findings. And so just rounding out that body of research, fascinating as it was, we did identify a series of challenges. The first of being, in, given our small sample size, but given that inconsistent development pattern, we were troubled with having, quite frankly, enough there to really revise the standards in a more modern way. We felt that any sort of new numbers that we picked for parking, for setbacks, and similar land use metrics would be, quite frankly, just as arbitrary as the 100-foot requirement was back in 1956. Keeping on that 100-foot setback requirement, we on staff, and we communicated this to you in the ZOCO meeting in September, we feel that this is a very suburban standard that's seeking, in as blunt a way as possible, to try to dramatically separate uses that may potentially be inconsistent with one another, not be terribly compatible, but there isn't the flexibility there that's needed for an urbanizing county, and in many places, an urban county, that we've become to today since those 1956 times. This image here is just a quick graphic illustration. I'll caveat and say that it's not survey accurate, but if you take a look at the white lines that have appeared there, that's what essentially a 100-foot setback is going to look like from the, either the adjacent R districts or the streets that are adjacent or associated with an R district. And so pinching in the site design, it does bring the development of a community swimming pool closer into the site, but it does create a lot of complications for parking the site, providing the adequate facilities that you need to operate a community swimming pool, even with the oversight that the use permit review provides. We did a neighborhood jurisdiction, neighboring jurisdiction comparison, rather, to the parking requirements. We found that our standards do overpark the site in comparison to our neighbors. I'll go over that a brief, I'll revisit that in our recommendation. And we did have some concerns that our coverage requirements could be a barrier for what is essentially inherently impervious use. A swimming pool has a lot of impervious surface. And we do thank our colleagues in the zoning division for pointing out a conflict between our Article 3 standards pertaining to fences and the fence height of no more than four feet in a front yard, and the use standard fence height for a community swimming pool, which should be, which, as it reads today, shall be no less than six feet. We wanted to address that conflict with this amendment. And so knowing that this is a use that, in virtually all zoning districts, needs, still needs that County Board use permit review, we felt that that was the best vehicle and the best medium to introduce, on a case-by-case basis, the opportunity for a community swimming pool operator to have a more, to request a modification from those existing conditions, existing standards. Rather than rewrite those standards, again, for an admittedly small sample size, let's put the onus on the operators themselves to suggest and propose a palatable alternative that puts them in a position to have a more creative site design, but also to be, to continue to be a good neighbor to the surrounding residences. And so the language that you'll see in Attachment A is focused on providing authority for the County Board to modify standards associated with fencing, coverage, and placement. And we were very specific to call out that 100-foot setback requirement. And we also brought, introduced criteria that we'd like not just the staff reviewing these use permits to be mindful of, but also the County Board to be considering as they're evaluating these requests. We also included some either editorial changes or some cleanup clarification, particularly to resolve that fencing conflict that I mentioned, to clarify the parking location, to reintroduce some language that is only applicable to community swimming pools, and to remove some confusing languages related to signs that we already have covered in our Article 13. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are on track, per the RTA that was adopted by the Board at their September 20th, 22nd meeting. That authorized your public hearing tonight, as well as the public hearing currently scheduled for next Saturday. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is it next Saturday or the Saturday afternoon?
It's Saturday, October 20th. I apologize for misspeaking there.
Quite all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
I have one speaker, Blair Miller.
Hi, my name is Lucy Connolly. I'm a freshman at Washington Lee High School.
Hi, my name is Blair Miller, and I am in 7th grade at Swanson Middle School.
Welcome.
So currently, I have practice, I have water polo practice from 7 to 8 or 8 to 9. Since I have to wake up at 6:15 every morning, it's very late for me. That's why we need to pass the zoning law. We need to make a new pool so that there will be more space and a greater variety of times to be able to practice. Not only that, but we will also be able to practice in a larger pool, one that is right for water polo. Currently, we're practicing in a diving well at Wakefield High School, which is very narrow and very small. I'm very new to water polo, and I think that the zoning law should be passed so I can start learning in the right type of pool.
Like Blair said, she had just started, but I've been playing this since I've been seven years old.
Water polo.
Yes. And the team has expanded quite a lot since when she started and when I started. I believe that with all the groups that we have in Arlington, to have another community pool in for every, like, swimming, diving team, and synchronized swimming, I think we need to have another community pool so that we can have more time and space to practice for the things that we need.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Engel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Richard Engel. I've been a 30-year, 30-year member of Dominion Hills Pool Club, and I've been on the Board of Directors for 20 years. We don't have an official position on the zoning ordinance amendment, but I did review the staff report, and I think I can say that, you know, our board would go along with it. But I think what I wanted to do is just to give you a little background on the increasing popularity of Arlington County community pools. I don't know how many of you are pool club members. Good, okay. But it's really been quite amazing. When the popularity, growing popularity of the pool club, clubs correlates, I think, precisely with the increase in student population in the Arlington schools. When we moved to our Boulevard Manor in 1987, Ashland Elementary School, which abuts Dominion Hills, had 235 students. It's now 700. We couldn't even fill our pool memberships. We had 375 memberships. We had to rent out the other 125 to summer members. Now, not only do we have all 500 memberships, but we have over 400 families on our waiting list, and that's about a five-year waiting list. That's consistent with the other pools in Arlington. The community pools create a wonderful environment for both competitive swimmers and just families in general, lap swimmers like myself. But equally important, they provide, I would like the county to remember that they provide relief in terms of having to provide additional swimming facilities in the county. Each pool club has about 500 memberships. That amounts to three or four active swimmers per membership. So if you think about that, that's probably 7,500 active swimmers that the county does not have to accommodate in the county pools during the peak summertime. And yet, we pay our six taxes on our property. In any event, I think we're probably in a good position in that we have 5 and 3/4 acres of land. I don't think we'd be affected by the current setback. If any of you are not familiar with it, we have the historic Powhatan Springs in the back of the property. We have, we protect, actually, the Reeves Run, which runs through the property and goes down to, down to 4-Mile Run. So I do appreciate the flexibility. I think it's important, as we go forward, to realize that today is a very different time than it was in 1955. It's not unusual now to see our parking lot completely filled up. It's not unusual to have both parents bring their cars to the pool clubs because they have different schedules, children on different schedules, things of that sort. And so I do appreciate that flexibility in the zoning ordinance. I don't think I have anything more to say about that, but I just wanted to give you a context in terms of the current state of community pools in Arlington, based on our perspective from Dominion Hills.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that perspective. Thank you very much. Is that, does that conclude the list of public speakers? I don't see any commissions. Did Parks and Rec hear this? Was this presented to them?
No, ma'am.
It wasn't? Is there a reason that it would not have been? Okay. No problem. I don't think we need to rely on input from Parks and Rec, although we obviously would be open to it. So the matter is now with the commission, and I believe it's Commissioner Weir has a report for us.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your excellent report, also to Ms. Miller and Ms. Connolly, is that correct? And Mr. Engel for your comments. I have submitted a report, and I will rely on that, but I do wish to summarize just a couple of things. As mentioned, the committee met on September 4 and discussed the matter. There were a good number of commissioners, so I'll add some things just for the reminder and benefit of both the people who were and who were not there. The overall theme, I think, and context of the discussion and the proposal is a change in the opportunities that are afforded for recreational and physical exercise in the county since the zoning ordinance was enacted. And those, you know, we, those changes, I think it's worth pointing out and being mindful of, have also impacted traditionally underserved communities, which is the location of the project that is the impetus of this study. So, you know, we have, as a result of this study, an opportunity to address a lot of the changes in opportunities in the county for recreation, for public health, for exercise, for physical fitness. But, you know, this new opportunity might not look like the opportunities that people remember from... remember from what the county was when the current stock of community pools and when the current zoning ordinance governing their use permitting was implemented. So the, you know, that said, the themes of the discussion, as I mentioned in the report, were what, what would the implications be should existing pools, all of which are not in compliance with the zoning ordinance in unique ways, seek to take more robust advantage of, of new discretion and flexibility that would be vested in the county board? What principles should structure or cabin the new discretion and flexibility that the county board has or would have should the ordinance be adopted? And perhaps a side issue, but, but addressed nonetheless, is what, what do we need to be thinking about in terms of parking for employees at the community pools? Now, note that, and this is mentioned in the staff report, that, that parking is not among the things that the county would have this new, that the county board would have this new authority to adjust site permits for. That's why I say it might be a little bit of a side issue, but it did come up at the, at the zoning committee meeting. As far as potential discussion issues, you know, I think we met once, so we didn't have the same kind of fulsome discussion that I think Commissioner Geren mentioned for, for the non-conforming, but, you know, we, potential discussion factors could include what factors, if any, beyond what are already listed in the, in the proposed amendment, should the board explicitly consider in determining whether to modify use permit requirements, and, and how the proposed ordinance could best ensure that community swimming pools wishing to take robust advantage of the new flexibility could do so while continuing to minimally impact the surrounding neighborhoods. The other proposed discussion topic that I highlighted in the report was how a proposed ordinance could best ensure that new pools in smaller parcels, like, like the, like the parcel that was the impetus for the study, that have, and, unlike that parcel that have heretofore would not have been feasible sites for a pool, would minimally impact surrounding neighborhoods. I have a proposed motion, but I think that I should hold off until there's been any discussion.
Right. So now with, with the commission discussion, are there questions? That's a reasonable agenda, I think. Shall we have first some clarifying questions, and then we can go one by one to the three-part agenda you mentioned? Commissioner Geren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Weir. That was a very nice report. Mr. Rogers, a very nice report as well. I do have a question for you. If you would just explain to us briefly what the use permit process and review are like, given that these proposed changes would put a lot of modification ability in the hands of the county board, what happens if the community says, "This is not working out the way we thought it would. We need some remedies to address whatever." How does that work?
So in, in very general terms, a existing or new community swimming pool operator would submit an application to our staff. We would intake that along with the required fee. But as I, as I briefly mentioned in one of the slides, this would be slightly different than some of our typical use permit reviews, say for a family daycare home where the, for example, the, the increased number of children are in a structure already that doesn't have new construction in, in most instances. There, there could be some, some new construction. Oftentimes, there, we would anticipate it. And so one of the follow-on items as part of this zoning ordinance amendment is working with our colleagues on the 10th floor to ensure that we're getting the information that we need, such as a plan of development, hours of operation, all of the different land use characteristics that an existing or new community swimming pool operator would, you know, what is their plan of, of operation? We would evaluate that. We would also be seeking, we would conduct outreach and seek comment from the neighboring property owners, as, as well as the, the adjacent or nearby civic association or associations. And there would have been, there would be an opportunity for that public comment to, to factor into the, the staff's consideration of the use permit review, as well as the county board's analysis and reflection on the staff recommendation. Of course, as, as you know, Commissioner Geren, those, that use permit would be reviewed by staff, placed on a county board agenda for review of the staff recommendation.
May I follow up? Yes, please.
And let's assume that we all feel like this is great, this is going to work, and then something happens that was not foreseen. What remedy does the neighborhood have to say, "This is louder than we thought it was," or "Brighter than we thought it was," or "The hours of operation are too great on X day"?
I think the way that I'll answer your question, Commissioner Geren, is in instances where county residents feel like an adjacent neighbor or a neighboring use, let's say, is, is violating not just a, a regulation or a zoning ordinance, but the conditions of a use permit, there are code enforcement measures that our staff can take that, you know, escalate from first just a courtesy, a courtesy visit, a phone call, and a reminder by our staff of those conditions, on up to further legal action that can result in fines or, or other legal implications. So typically, it does not come to that, but there are remedies, even after the approval process, where the, the staff with the, the intelligence and insight and information from the community are empowered to ensure that a community swimming pool operator or, or any other land use is complying with the applicable regulations. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes, and then Commissioner Weir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize to my colleagues for missing the ZOco meeting on this, although you know I would have loved to have been at this one. I guess my question to staff or to my colleagues is, can I have a little bit more understanding? Understanding, of course, that this has already been advertised. Staff's thoughts on parking not being modifiable by the county board? It's a frequent and recurring use that we allow modifications for. And I believe if I interpreted your staff report earlier, the slide, make sure it's clear so I understand, are regulations are more restrictive than neighboring ones? And specifically, what do we mean by that?
So Commissioner Hughes, I'll clarify that last question, and then I'll revisit the parking modification. In comparison with several of our other neighboring jurisdictions, and, and you'll find that chart, I believe it's Attachment D in your staff report, if, if one were to take a identical community swimming pool of identical sides and take it through the development process of not just here in Arlington, but some of the other neighboring jurisdictions, the required parking formula for, for meeting the minimum parking standards here in Arlington would result in a higher number of parking spaces being required onsite than any of the others that we surveyed. And so that's, if, if I use the word "more restrictive," what I meant was that finding space for all those parking spaces could be a complication. That leads me to get back to your first instance in that we, the, the commission is correct that we identified this as a potential barrier and a challenge for existing or community or new community swimming pool operators. What we leaned on in our analysis was the provisions already in the zoning ordinance in Article 14. It's, it's 14 dot 3 dot 7 that permit a community swimming pool operator. It's nested, it's not listed explicitly, but it is understood, per confirmation that we've had with the zoning administrator, amongst a host of other recreation facilities, that community swimming pools may request a, a modification of that parking number requirement from the county board as part of a use permit process. And so for, and, and we did outline that analysis in our staff report. And so for us, focusing on this zoning ordinance amendment, our conversation to ourselves was, there's no need to account for this barrier or introduce additional flexibility into the zoning ordinance where there's already a path to account for that flexibility on a case-by-case basis. And I apologize if we weren't as clear on that as we could have been in the report.
Follow up?
Just want to do one quick follow-up. So to be clear, the amount of parking is a modifiable action by the county board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Commissioner Weir, and then Commissioner Schwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make one point that I had intended to make in my presentation, and then also I have a question for Mr. Rogers. And that point that I had intended to make was, for, for everyone's benefit, and probably everyone knows this, but more than one commissioner at ZOco, myself included, became confused on this point. The proposed amendment is not an amendment to the actual site requirements. Just so everybody, I want everyone to be on the same page about this. It is, it is an amendment that would grant the board authority to, when a case-by-case, modify the site requirements. But the base case site requirements, the 100-foot setbacks, everything that we've heard so far, except for the, the one or two technical amendments, are not being modified.
They stay in place.
Stay in place. The board just now has a little bit more flexibility to, to deal with case-by-case, to deal with, with circumstances unique to the site on a case-by-case basis. So that, that was the point that I wanted to add. The clarifying question I have, Mr. Rogers, first, I guess, is, let me know if I've just misspoken. But second, has anything in the actual proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance materially or substantively changed since we saw it at the zoning committee meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Schwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hughes asked a bunch of good questions that I was going to ask, so thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I have one remaining one on parking, Mr. Rogers. In the staff report, you note that some of the variances were due to parking for Overly, and I guess I think a few other pools. And on page 19, you have Attachment C noting kind of the deviance from the required parking. I'm wondering if you could kind of briefly, and you don't have to go into each pool, but over history, but was 14, 3 dot 3 dot 7 C used for these deviations? Or how do we arrive kind of at a lower parking for most of these pools, or all these pools?
I'll, I'll get at the, the present modification authority that we have in the zoning ordinance. That's a very new standard. That was, that was adopted, I believe, five years ago into the zoning ordinance, and so that would not have been available. In, in most of these instances, the, the pool was established at a time when a different parking requirement was in place. And so with that 1956 zoning ordinance requirement, and I believe, if memory serves me right, the previous parking requirement was somewhere along the lines of one space per every 500 square feet of gross floor area in, in the facility. With the 1956 ordinance, a new parking requirement was established for community swimming pools. And so that's when you apply the new standard compared to the old, old existing parking lot, that's where we're seeing the discrepancy.
And the modification you mentioned for, to the ordinance about five years ago, that also applies to schools, correct? That's the one that allows the schools?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that when I was pulling it up on my phone, I was looking at the right section of the code. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Brooks?
One more real quick technical question, since we were just talking about Attachment C. The parking requirement, is that one space per 40 square feet of pool area?
Yes, sir.
How, how do you arrive at the required parking for Arlington Forest Club?
We were relying on some administrative change documents that had been submitted for the, for lack of a better word, the rebuild and the reconstruction of that facility. I believe that those, that, those permits and that work was done within the last 10 years. I want to say eight years ago, but I, I may be off by a few years in that regard. And so in the staff research, in the permit records, the applicant had, had calculated a parking tabulation. And so in, in that instance, for those 166 spaces you're seeing in the table, those were simply brought in from that parking tabulation.
Okay. But it's under the required parking column, and, and that only works out to be one space per 28 square feet?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So the, for Arlington Forest, they, they were accounting in that parking tabulation, if, if I'm recalling it correctly, that the, the count had essentially three light items, the pool surface water, the multipurpose room, and the 12 spaces for the tennis courts.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else, questions? Commissioner Morton?
I apologize for missing the previous meetings on this. I have just a big picture question, which is, I know this was catalyzed by a particular applicant. Did you, did the staff do any analysis about, is there some other kind of pent-up demand for new pools, which I know you say this will apply to as well? Or are you anticipating this mostly applying to the existing pools?
Mostly the existing pools.
Good question. Commissioner Hughes?
I'm going to piggyback onto Commissioner Morton's comments to say, I am going to absolutely support this motion, but I do think that that's an important conversation to be had that's not being had in this, in this conversation. It's something we're trying to avoid, in my opinion. We are an urbanizing county, and the opportunities are scarce and minimal to having this use within our community. I believe the gentleman who spoke tonight publicly said that it was a five-year waitlist. I have heard testaments that it is quite longer than that, and can tell you that the opportunities are slim to none for getting community pools in this county. I have young children. I am the cause. I've admitted that before. I continue to, to be the challenge. And that's something we need to begin to think about. I am disappointed that the use permit applications don't allow for health and welfare to be more prominent in the considerations for reasons for prompting these applications. We are correct, the reason we're here tonight, none of us are going to choose, there's an existing pool that was a pool, is no longer a pool, and we've got zoning issues, so we want to find a way to make it a pool again. That's absolutely admirable. But what it doesn't address is the lack of pools in our county. It's caused by many things. Our zoning ordinance within-house pools are treated on single-family homes for lot coverage, which limits their ability to be created. And it's also created by the challenges we as a community make by not having this use more frequently and in other areas, based on when it was done. I'm not going to speak further, I think, but I may reserve mine based on Commissioner Weir's further comments. But I'm supporting this, but I am also, for the record, disappointed. And I think that we ourselves need to begin to ask these questions. Why are we trying to limit the community's ability to provide opportunities that we as the public are going to be spending lots of taxpayer money on because we have an incredible amount of pent-up demand? The list that he mentioned for Arlington Forest is replicated across all the community pools and the country clubs, or whatever else you like to think of them, so.
Can I just get a clarification from you as to why you think this process of modification, this tack the county is taking, limits the creation of new community pools? That, that was your assertion, correct? I, I just point out, you, you did say because health and welfare were not prominent?
I think that if we had an application come forward for a GLUP zoning ordinance that was a use permit request for a site-abutting, current R districted zone... was a use permit request for a site-abutting current R districted zones, R6 with million-dollar houses, we would have a very difficult time finding a way to yes to 500 new families being members, and as the gentleman here pointed out, 1,500 new swimmers swimming around Saturday morning from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., as the young lady who spoke earlier spoke. And the thing that we talk about, I think, in the staff report alluded to, the inconsistency of use and the suburban mindset that might have been the impetus of this is probably quite true. And it also ignores the fact that I own a single-family home, and yes, if you put it in my backyard, maybe I wouldn't be happy, maybe I'd be great. I might put a door on the back of my fence to let myself in. But the reality of that is, I think that, in this case, the one application we have is an easy yes. But I don't know if we have very many easy yeses left, and I don't think we've taken this opportunity to think about how we could get to yes.
Would staff like to comment?
Not this time.
Is there any further comment on the issue, Commissioner McSweeney?
Risk of belaboring this. I actually thought this was a very good proposal and a way to certainly make sure that we could get at least one other pool. So, Mr. Hughes, what I guess I'm curious about is what would you have wanted to see come forward instead? What would you suggest, other than something that looks at the zoning?
I guess my question to Commissioner Weir, or to, is my understanding that current non-occupied pool that might become a pool have a four-foot setback from existing R districts?
Does anyone know that? Does staff know the answer to that question?
My understanding is that, I believe that Commissioner Hughes has a pretty accurate understanding of the proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any reason that that setback is inappropriate in other places. I'm saying that if it were to have been instead in an R6 district in my neighborhood, I think that four feet's also appropriate. If I saw a four-foot setback in any other neighborhood that's single-family homes, I'd also find it to be appropriate. My concern is, by leaving this as an arbitrary setback fashion, we allow for public resentment to build in processes and therefore limit the ability for the creation of new community pools.
Please.
So what you're actually proposing or suggesting is that you would have been happy to see more specific changes to the setbacks and that would allow for more latitude? That's what I think I'm hearing you say. Rather than have the county board have to make these determinations one by one? Do I understand you correctly?
You are correct. I mean, the opportunities for five-acre sites, they're not going to happen anymore. So we should be honest to say, what if someone compiles a 1.4-acre site or a 1.3-acre site in an R districted area? What would we be willing to accept as far as the standards for creating a community pool?
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying now, and I, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Lintelme.
If I remember correctly, when we, at the ZOCO meetings, this was discussed extensively, and there was the recognition that it is simply impossible to have a 100-foot setback on anything new. It just won't, there's no land left. Unless one of the country clubs totally redevelops, it will not happen ever again in this county. So the 100 feet really is no longer operable. But the question was, what would the number be? I don't think anybody was able to come up with a number, because given how dense this county is now, it's going to have to be extremely site-specific, and there's no way to put a particular number, other than saying, there's none, and we have to figure it out. So however you look at it, it's going to be arbitrary to a certain extent, because it's going to have to be very site-specific. And at that point, I guess, we pretty much threw up our hands and said, fine, leave it what it is, and it'll have to be done, effectively be done on a case-by-case basis.
Commissioner Weir?
I just want to follow up on a point that Commissioner Lintelme made. It might be somewhat arbitrary, but it certainly won't be capricious. Because I just want to point out that there is some language. I personally would have liked to have seen a little bit more language to structure the board's discretion, but in the proposed addition, in the proposed 12.4.8e1a, there's language about the board has to consider the limiting, has to limit the impacts of the community pool structures, buildings, gathering spaces, and open spaces on adjacent residential neighborhoods. There has to be limitation of hours. But in the section, those are sub-points to another section that talks about the need to encourage and facilitate additional pools. So I think that there is, I think that there's enough language to sort of give direction, for the board to give direction to itself on what, you know, on a case-by-case basis, what are the outsides of what can be considered. That said, you know, Commissioner Hughes, your points about resentment building through the process and causing us to lose what might otherwise be a good project, I'm not talking about the specific project in the valley, but the abstract project, those are good points.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Gierin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hughes, as always, I respect your viewpoint and also your thinking big-picture, but I do want to remind us all that ZOCO, like planning in general, is very incremental, and this is a very good and proactive first step for us to be taking. And should the board go forward and find that re-implementing the pool in NOC is feasible, we will now have a precedent with a four-foot setback. And I think that's, given what I'm hearing in our discussion and from the public, that our community has changed over time, and the demand is still high, and we have very different opportunities than we used to have to try to meet those demands, I think this is a very progressive step, and I appreciate you reminding us to always aspire to do more.
Anyone else? I would just like to address the point of building resentments and conflict. We've just been through a two-year process on Four Mile Run Valley, which was full of conversation, conflict, perspective, clashing perspectives. That seems to me, and we, I think we come out of it stronger with a more resilient vision going forward. I very much believe in those kinds of conversations. They take a lot of time. People complain about how long they take, but that's the way you get to yes and a better, more resilient vision. I also want to subscribe to Commissioner Gierin's framing that incremental progress is a good thing. That's how we move forward, and I think that's a very good point. At the same time, thank you for your perspective. It gives us all sort of a goal, perhaps, to measure this incremental progress against. So I think this was a good discussion. I think we have exhausted the topic for now, and I'll look to Commissioner Weir for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So while Commissioner Hughes, like he often has done, has had me go, oh, shoot, I hadn't thought about that. I don't know what my next step is. I do think, Commissioner Gierin, that you're right about the opportunity that this specifically presents and the potentially very beneficial precedent that it could give us. So thank you for casting that thought. So my motion is the county manager's recommended motion. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the proposed ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Sections 4.1.2 and 12.4.8 of the Arlington County zoning ordinance to authorize the county board to modify fencing, coverage, and placement standards for community swimming pools by use permit and to make other editorial changes to correct references and improve clarity, as shown in Attachment A of the October 2, 2018 staff report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hughes?
I do just want to make sure that my colleagues know. I do appreciate the incremental policy here, and I do think we are moving in the right direction. My comment is to challenge us to think more broadly on this subject. That was its intent and goal. I do think there's an opportunity lost with establishing not an arbitrary and capricious, but a specific setback that was achievable in this opportunity, therefore cementing in stone that the line in the sand is four feet, which is absolutely the closest setback we have done, I believe, if it is approved by the county board later by a use permit, since probably the 50s zoning administrations next to it, since sideyard setbacks are eight feet on the narrowest side of your house. So I do challenge us to think about if we think a community pool that had not existed on a one- or two-acre site, or a 1.5-acre site in an R district in a neighborhood that has a powerful civic association with neighbors who've not heard whistles in the morning, would be capable of created, being created. And then whether or not that's a good thing or a bad thing in our community. I don't know that answer. I do know where I stand in it.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gierin, then Commissioner McSweeney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm delighted that we have representatives from water polo who, and thank you so much for coming out and speaking. I know that always takes a lot of bravery, but it really means a lot to us, and it does weigh in on our discussions. I do hope, since I know a representative for the applicant is here, that this truly will be a community pool, because one of the things that community pools provides hasn't really been discussed here, and that is an opportunity for the community to get together. People can go barbecue. I know the community pool that I belong to, they swear they're the largest employer of Arlington's youth in the county. And I like that idea, too, that the kids who go here and learn how to swim or maybe play water polo end up working the snack bar and working as lifeguards. So I just want to go on the record and make sure that that is, in fact, the vision for this pool going forward.
Okay. Commissioner McSweeney?
Thank you, Commissioner Gierin. You've actually, I'd like to associate myself with your comments, because I was actually going to say the same thing. I think it's really important that this also be a community pool and available to the community that it resides within. And I also was, I'm always delighted to see students come and talk to us, especially on something that is potentially as dry as zoning. So thank you so much for your engagement.
Anyone else? Commissioner Weir?
Actually, I want to speak to the comments just made for the benefit of those who weren't there and those who were who may not recall. I believe I heard the applicant say that the intent is that for anyone in the Green Valley neighborhood, I don't know if you said that they would have free memberships or they would have free use, but do I recall correctly you saying that the people in the neighborhood, that the vision was that they would be able to use the pool?
Please, please come forward.
I just, I want to...
Yes, thank you.
I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do actually, but I...
I think he wants to be put on the spot.
I just want the record to reflect this, because I thought it was a very valuable piece of information at the meeting.
Yes, thank you. My name is Matthew Weinstein, I'm the counsel and representative for the applicant for this community pool in NOC and hopefully be approved by the board at its October meeting. Yes, the intent is the community pool be open to the public. They would, you know, we're working on the schedule and everything, but be open to the public. They would pay admission fee to go swim during the open hours, and the intent is there would be some water polo practices during limited scheduled times, but it will be primarily a community pool and open to the public. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to make a comment? No amendments? I'm hearing no amendments. So if that's the case, all in favor of the main motion, raise your hand. We are unanimous opposed? Then we have a unanimous vote. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Madam Clerk, would you please call the final agenda item?
Item number three is a request to authorize advertisement of the Four Mile Run Valley area plan. Richard Tucker, our planning staff, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Tucker.
Good evening. I also have with me Richard Best from DES and Bethany Heim from DPR.
Welcome, both of you. Thank you.
So what you have before you is a request to advertise staff report. This, hopefully, we will go forward at the October 20th county board meeting and have the draft area plan advertised for action at the November planning commission and board meetings. Just to give you some background, I don't mean to belabor the details of the area plan. We, you know, the area plan itself is consistent with the policy framework, which was adopted, reviewed, and adopted back in May. So a lot of the information that's in the area plan is sort of repetitive of that information, and we've sort of filled out the document with some supplementary information, graphics, background, et cetera, to make it what we would normally call an area plan. So I'm going to review it with you in very quick strokes and certainly highlight some of the major planning ideas that are contained within it, and certainly welcome your questions at the end. So what you see on your screen currently is the study area boundaries. As you know, this planning process involved both an area plan and a park master plan process at the same time. And also, we coordinated the design of the NOC Town Square, which had been an ongoing process, and we thought to make sure that we had proper coordination, all departments responding to the community, we would do that all in a coordinated fashion. So this has been a two-year process, and many opportunities for community engagement and input, starting with our kickoff in June of 2016, the public charrette that we had over the course of a week in December of that year. There were two county board work sessions, which provided guidance that led to the concept plan that we have and many of the recommendations that are central to the plan document. One specifically, I think, that is, has been brought to your attention about parking in this area, which should be, per the board's direction, we should be seeking on-street solutions to parking instead of potentially looking at parking garages. So that's certainly woven into the recommendations of the plan. We had an open house in July 2017, a lot of participation at that as well. As I mentioned before, the policy framework was adopted back in May. That included a concept plan and various policy recommendations, which, again, appear in the area plan, which is before you. And just as a note, the park master plan was adopted at the September county board meeting. So looking at the existing conditions, obviously, in this area, we have primarily properties that are designated for industrial use on the general land use plan. There is a little bit of service commercial on the north side, or in the west side of Shillington Road. And at 24th Road and Glebe Road, there's a small area of medium residential, which is primarily hotel use, and there's a small apartment complex there, and a church, which is designated as historic. The existing zoning matches the general land use plan, so again, primarily industrial, M1 and M2. There's some service commercial and multifamily zoning as well. So our concept plan, which, again, comes, was adopted as part of the policy framework, really looks at maintaining the existing character of the area. So working from left to right, Subarea A shaded in blue, and Subareas C as well, C and D primarily, where we would preserve the existing uses. There was a strong affinity for the types of uses that are in this area, including auto repair, pet services, storage. There's a number of things that, if not in this area, where would they be in this county? One of the key questions that was asked at the beginning of the process, you know, what is anyone's opinion about the character of this area? Could we entertain change in this area? And the answer was no. We would like to keep this area primarily industrial. But with that, the idea of introducing new uses, arts uses, more creative uses, was a prevalent idea as well. And so in Subarea B, the area shaded in pink, is an area where we preserve existing uses, but also hope to incorporate arts uses as well. There are small areas that are shaded in pink, adjacent... There are small areas that are shaded in pink, adjacent to the NOC revitalization area. The NOC revitalization area is outlined in purple, and the areas that are shaded in pink just adjacent to that are small areas that we feel that there could be an opportunity to help realize the vision for the NOC revitalization District. In that plan, it called for mixed-use development, mid-rise development. However, many of the lots that are within the district are narrow, and the redevelopment opportunities are very difficult to realize. So by augmenting the site areas adjacent to, and those areas within the NOC revitalization District, we hope to encourage the development of some of those lots that are directly along Sherrington Road. So some of the big ideas in terms of the plan and how we responded to some of the ideas that came forward, another one of the big ideas was increasing access to the stream. Currently, we typically only experience the stream when we're driving across a bridge. The one limited opportunity to really get towards the water within the study area is adjacent to the dog park, so those where dogs get down there in the water. But otherwise, there's not a great opportunity to experience the stream. So the idea that we have that's woven into our plan is to create a series of overlooks and what are access points. So there are suggested along the stream, primarily on the south side, we have overlooks that would be within Sherrington Park, there's one overlooked location on the north side at Walter Reed Drive, and then there's one additional access point located in Elias Freed Park, west of Walter Reed Drive. A major concept and subject of much of our conversation has been the reconfiguration, or potential reconfiguration, of Walter Reed Drive, oh, excuse me, of Four Mile Run Drive. Currently, it's a four-lane configuration with parking on each side. The concept going forward that could be implemented over time would be a three-lane configuration, one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. What that gives us an opportunity to do is address the parking shortage in the area. So what this concept shows is diagonal parking on the frontage of Jenny Dean Park, which would be implemented with the completion of Jenny Dean Park improvements that is scheduled to kick off in 2019 and be completed by 2021. And it also gives us an opportunity to create additional sidewalk space on the south side of the road, where if any of you were a part of the walking tour that we did at the kickoff, all of this, all the space that we considered the sidewalk is actually private property. And so there's really limited opportunity, as we did our walking tour, weaving between cars that are parked on the sidewalk, limited opportunity for public access through the area. This inset picture shows the diagonal parking that would be implemented as part of the park improvements when that project is completed, and in this case, backend parking is recommended. So the concept for the Four Mile Run, we anticipate doing it over a phased period of time, including some monitoring. So in the short term, nearest to Jenny Dean Park, DES staff will be communicating with the local community, both the business community members, the dog park users, and the civic association over the next 45 days, 60 days, with recommendations for the street frontages in and around Jenny Dean Park, so the frontage of Four Mile Run Drive, Nelson Street, Oakland Street, and how those areas and other areas can be, the parking regulations can be modified to better promote turnover in that area. So there's a lot of competition for parking in that area, and there's limited regulation, and some of the regulation is a jumble, there's different regulations in place. So streamlining that and then promoting more turnover is the goal, and we'll have staff out talking with the community over the next two months to outline some of those changes. In the mid to long term, the changes can be implemented with paint, and we hope to monitor the change over time to make sure that it's working in the manner that had been imagined, and if that's the case, then we can do permanent implementation, which means moving curbs and gutters, et cetera. So just to give you more of a visual, these are images that are in the draft area plans. Looking at Four Mile Run Drive at Oxford Street, the four-lane configuration with parking on both sides. As an interim condition, we can, just with paint and some planters, sort of redefine the people space and create additional space for pedestrians by narrowing the cross-section available for cars. And then, in a permanent condition, we can actually build out the curbs and gutters and get into the details of street trees and et cetera. So this is something that we can do in the long term, it's not something that's specified in the CIP for the next 10 years, so it's something that's way out there, but obviously if this is something that works, that we've tested and it seems to fit, this is something we can inspire to. So in addition to that, we talk about in the plan, a series of gateways and wayfinding for the area. One of the issues that we've been coordinating with, in terms of the park master plan and the area plan, is coming up with a scheme for the wayfinding that might characterize this area and help people find their way. So in the park master planning process, their next phase is design. In that design phase, they will look at wayfinding within the park, and we will coordinate with the park staff on that selection process, that thought process, and the community process to pick or select a theme and a design for that, and how it might also apply to the larger areas as well. So we'll be involved in that process. This is a map of the trail hierarchy in this area. Obviously, with the WNOD, the Four Mile Run Trail, this is a well-traveled area, and so this just highlights the connections through the area. One of the ideas in terms of pedestrian and bicycle safety, one of the bigger topic areas, is how to better and more safely connect people who are using the Four Mile Run Trail and connecting to the WNOD to the, from east to west. We have an illustration in the plan that shows a underpass under Sherrington Road. This is a particular point of conflict, a safety concern for both pedestrians and bicyclists. The text that accompanies this illustration discusses both an underpass and an overpass for further study, both in terms of feasibility, cost benefit, et cetera. So we chose to show this illustration in the draft plan. We had some comments about how it was described and the sort of connotation that we had made a decision and we haven't. So the language has been revised to make sure that we're discussing both equally, and we actually added a picture of a nice sort of curved bridge that, from Cleveland, which is similar to what would need to be the connection between the two trails in this location. So we want to keep that thought alive, that there could be an overpass in this area. Obviously, there are some technical challenges and some cost challenges that need to be sorted out, as to, you know, finding out the best solution for Arlington, but that would happen at a later phase. So again, the text has been revised. So with that, I want to stop. Since the policy framework was adopted in May and we had that extensive review, we certainly have a lot of consistency with that document. So I'll stop at this point and certainly take your questions after public testimony.
Mr. Best, would you, do you have a presentation, or are you here for questions?
Actually not, I'm here for questions.
Questions, very good. Okay. Thank you very much for that very succinct overview, it was extremely helpful. Do we have any public speakers?
We have one.
Could you call the first public speaker?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Portia Clark.
Good evening, Ms. Clark.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, my name is Portia Clark, and I'm president of the NOC Civic Association currently. I have one specific matter to raise this evening regarding the request to advertise the area plan for the Four Mile Run Valley Initiative. The RTA report notes that certain organizations, including the NOC Civic Association, will be informed of the transportation plans for the area in early November. The county is scheduled to provide its transportation briefing to the NOC Civic Association on November the 5th at our regularly scheduled meeting. Unfortunately, according to the RTA report, your commission is scheduled to hear and vote on the area plan for our community on the same date and time. We would appreciate your consideration and working with us to resolve this conflict. But there is one other item I'd like to mention at this time. On page 4.7 of the September 14th draft, the document notes support for urban design, community planning, open space goals for the Four Mile Run Valley, NOC, and Sherrington. To be clear, the Four Mile Run Valley is located in NOC. We do not want our identity to be lost or glossed over. We would suggest stating Four Mile Run Valley and the rest of NOC and Sherrington as necessary correction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude our public speakers? I don't see any other commissions here, so the matter is with the commission-
The Transportation Commission heard it last week.
Very good. Let's have that report then.
The, there's not a lot to say, it was voted, the commission voted to approve the RTA. Some of the discussion, which actually was captured by Mr. Tucker here, so I don't have to really get into it too much, the road diet for Four Mile Run Drive was discussed, some indicated some question whether the narrowing would be a problem in future years as the population grows. There was a discussion back and forth and showed that the VMT in the county has been stable, so that should not be a problem. The bicycle path was also addressed, Mr. Tucker went into that and how we, how they have in fact modified to make sure that a solution is not prejudged by, or seen to be prejudged by the area plan. One commission was concerned about a potential loss in the number of parking spaces, but the area plan does not have a loss in parking spaces, so again, that was discussed and resolved. Other than that, it was voted out to approve the request for advertising.
Thank you very much. And with that, I think I'll turn to Commissioner McSweeney.
Thank you. As you all know, I was the representative from the Planning Commission to the Four Mile Run Valley Working Group, and Commissioner Geren was our alternate, and as I noted, her expertise is actually tapped, her expertise with parks and rack actually was actually tapped to lead a process to define options for Jenny Dean Park, which we had actually heard previous to this, back in May. As you know also, this was at over two years' worth of meetings, and the working group was made up of at least 25 community members, 10 alternates, and staffed primarily by nine, nine county planners and staff, but of course, I think there were many more who contributed to this report. And as you know, this area is extremely important to recreation for the entire Arlington community, and especially for those residing in the adjacent Douglas Park, sits with a NOC, as Ms. Clark has mentioned, so obviously it's very important to NOC and the Sherrington neighborhoods. Over this period, I'm sorry, the major issues for the Four Mile Run Working Group from the outset were to improve the Four Mile Run Stream, including managing the stormwater and bank erosion issues, and improving pedestrian access to the stream, which is, much of this is part of the Parks Master Plan, improving Jenny Dean Park, which is also part of the Parks Master Plan, questions about the Sherrington Dog Park early on, it seems it was almost all we talked about early on, and whether to move it or expand it into an area away from the stream banks, that's also largely discussed as part of the Parks Master Plan, and as you know, it is not moved or reduced in any way. Determining which improvements and development of any should be planned in each of the areas, the area plan's subareas, taking into account the plans for the NOC Town Square, which is near Subarea D, and how Subareas C and D could align with existing plans for redevelopment, for planned redevelopment in the NOC neighborhood. Also zoning and maintaining space for industrial and service commercial uses that are there, and to balance those with county needs and the desire for additional parks and open space. And in fact, early on, that sort of was a question, which got resolved through the process. And defining the character of the area and reinforcing the industrial character, along with heavy use by nonprofits related to the arts. We have over 30 arts organizations that call the Four Mile Run Valley home, and this includes types of improvements that could be made and incentives for businesses to make improvements on their buildings. And then, of course, enhancing circulation for cars, bikes, and pedestrians, and addressing the numerous parking needs. We heard, we had a Long Range Planning Committee meeting on this on July 30th. It was held to discuss specifically the area plan. And there were several comments from commissioners that I'm going to actually not go through until the end of this. And we also had a final Four Mile Run Valley Working Group meeting after that on September 20th, to discuss the changes to the area plan that had occurred since the LRPC and before, and especially those in the Design and Implementation Chapters, the report that had made since the previous form, that had been made since the previous Four Mile Run Valley meeting. Many of these changes were actually influenced by the LRPC discussions we had, and I've gone into some of the changes, I've given you some pretty detailed where the changes are and which ones were addressed. I did think that it was probably worth mentioning a few of them. Obviously, this, a key element of this plan is retention of existing uses and adaptive reuse of buildings within the area. There is also, staff has suggested a special overlay district, which is something I know that we had talked about in the Long Range Planning, which would allow for some flexibility in future zoning for this area. And the only other things I thought were worth mentioning here and just worth going was the improved discussion examples and materials and images of public and art and creative placemaking in the Design Guidelines Chapter. Again, there was a lot of concern, I think, on the Four Mile Run Valley group, working group, that the Parks Plan and the area plan were not always consistent in terms of the conversation about materials, and in fact, the general vibe of the area, some of the examples given were an issue, but I think these were improved a lot in the area plan that we received. And there was some improved language regarding the Arts District, and a clearer intention to include community voices as part of that process was actually put throughout the document. And again, that had been a point of concern for many on the group. So I had neglected to put on the memo I sent you, the, a list of the issues, but I'm going to outline them now, potential issues for our conversation. I would like to propose that we talk about land use and zoning, specifically perhaps the special overlay district that's been suggested as part of the area plan, the Arts District, the concept and the discussion of the process going forward. Also, build two lines and buildings fronting the street, there was some additional language and specifications put into the area plan. Parking and transit is always an item that we discuss, but specifically, I guess I would just mention the intersection overlap of pedestrians, bikes, and cars at Sherrington Road and Four Mile Run, the road diet in general, and the phasing and monitoring that's being proposed in the area plan, the adequacy of existing parking and the parking study that is also being proposed in the area plan, and in general, connectivity of trails. I do want to add the conflict with the date that Ms. Clark brought up for November, and then any other items that planning commissioners decide they want to talk about.
I just had one- I just had one question dealing with the Dog Park and the encroachment, I think, inconsistent or illegal, I'm not sure what the right term is, encroachment of the car business on county land. We raised that. I think Commissioner Hughes made a motion at our last meeting on the subject, and I wanted to know what the disposition of that was. But we can, we can just add that to the end. Very well. Thank you for the report. It's extremely helpful. It was a very long and intensive process with many strands. And I'm glad to be brought up to date by your report. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the agenda. So I'm going to start with the first item on. What's that? Yes, indeed. Are there other items you like to, you would like to add? Sure.
Commissioner McSweeney, were you, when you were going through your outline, envisioning that the build-two-lines and building requirements would incorporate the fenestration elements as well? And windows and all that? Okay. Thank you very much.
Any additional, if you, in the course of our discussion, want, have an idea for additional conversation, different item, please just put it down. So meanwhile, let's start then with land use and zoning. And, yes, go ahead.
I didn't know if we wanted to address the implementation actions separately from that, or if folks want to take it as part of the other categories. I'll defer to Commissioner McSweeney as our discussion leader.
Well, the implementation actions are actually culled from the actual report. It's a summary. However, I think that if there, some of the changes are actually highlighted and they're easier to find in the implementation matrix. So perhaps just looking through that at the end is a good idea.
Anything else? Let's begin then with land use and zoning. And in particular, the suggestion about creating a special overlay district to provide incentives and flexibilities for patios and outdoor cafes. Is that, I am not familiar with the concept, what it would do, so perhaps a clarifying question could start that off. Is that part of the zoning or is that part of build-two-lines?
That's the zoning and land use, and I think I could just jump in here.
I was going to say, perhaps you could just discuss what you're recommending.
Sure. So in Chapter 5, as part of the implementation, there are three early processes or exercises that we will undertake.
Are you referring to the implementation matrix? Can you just give the page number?
5.1 and 5.2 is on your screen right now. So there are three follow-on processes, one being having to do with the discussion of creating an Arts District and what does that really mean. The second thing that we outline is zoning and land use analysis. So typically, in an area plan, a sector plan, we would outline potential changes to the general land use plan. In this case, the one change that we would make, since we certainly want to keep the existing zoning and general land use plan designations for the parcels within the study area, the one change that we would most likely follow up with is a designation of the boundaries of the study area, creating that as a new district where, within which, to the extent that we're going to have zoning ordinance changes to facilitate more flexibility and incentives to achieve the vision for this area, those zoning ordinance changes would apply only within this district. So it's something we've commonly done with area plans and sector plans where we have special provisions in the zoning ordinance that apply only to that area that we've considered and created a vision for.
So that would, for example, better indicate the Arts District? That might be an example of where, that would come into play or not?
That's a separate discussion because the boundaries of an Arts District in this area is certainly something for discussion. So we will have that discussion as well as a separate process. It may be co-terminis with this boundary, but it may not be. But I think that, to the extent that we're going to have zoning ordinance changes where we're potentially looking at additional flexibility to encourage the fulfillment of the vision, those provisions would only apply in this area. And it's something, again, we've commonly done in other.
CO Crystal City, for example.
Correct, correct. So those changes in Crystal City only apply there. And so when you look at the ordinance, there are special provisions and they're referenced to that particular district. Columbia Pike is another example, et cetera. So we've done this over and over and over again. But it's just our mechanism so that when we come to this next phase and we're talking about potential changes, it might be signage, it might be parking, it might be other things, certain incentives that we would put in place, they would apply only within this district.
Thank you. Commissioner McSweeney?
Thank you. I was just going to mention, so the suggestions, and I think this really came out of the conversation that we had at our LRPC, where people were asking questions about patios and outdoor cafes and being able to make modifications to existing zoning and also adding windows to existing buildings and just greater flexibility in painting buildings or doing murals, of course, within the sign ordinance. So I believe that, you know, staff really heard that. And then rather than be specific about the different types of zoning changes, they said, let's just create a Four Mile Run Valley Planning District, and then they can have that flexibility in the future.
I just wanted to make a comment here in terms of the character and status of this document. It both summarizes and memorializes a process that took two years, but it also sets forth future processes in the implementation matrix, for example.
Correct.
So it sets up further frameworks for discussing all kinds of issues, arts, parking, and other issues that will be further discussed with the community and nailed down in the future. Is my understanding correct of this document?
Yes, you're correct. So I think that, you know, obviously, the primary goal or the primary output of an area plan is establishing a vision and identifying those action steps that need to follow on. There may be zoning and land use related. There may be other community engagement processes that are necessary to further flesh out various concepts and ideas, supposedly related to road reconfiguration, et cetera, parking. Those things play out over time. Some of those are short-term and some of them are quite long-term as well.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Tucker. Specific to the guidelines in Chapter 4, I was just curious, do you anticipate, as that discussion continues in the future, that this might happen as a form-based code? Or is it going to be done more like proffers and incentives? Or any idea?
I don't believe we'll be doing a form-based code. And it's kind of interesting in this case, I mean, obviously, again, the vision is that the existing uses and we're talking about potentially reuse of buildings in this area. So the incentives will be geared around the idea of reuse, limited redevelopment within the height limit that is already established with the primarily industrial zoning. So I think that what we probably will look at is incentives just to encourage the types of creativity that might add to the theme of arts and sort of creating this funky place where there's color and vibrancy and activity. So to the extent that buildings can be reused for various purposes, arts uses, restaurants and other things, as well as the current users of the spaces. We don't necessarily, there was a strong sentiment about keeping a lot of the existing users in place. So just trying to be more creative in terms of using the existing buildings, potentially some limited redevelopment in this area. That's covered in some detail in the Design Guidelines in terms of having consistent building materials on new buildings, you know, using masonry primarily, et cetera. One of the ideas that we were discussing in the long-range discussion is not having a heavy hand in terms of dictating how a property is fashioned or used or what have you, but certainly allowing flexibility to let things happen sort of organically.
Anyone else on this topic? Then let's move along to the concept of the Arts District. Does anyone have? Commissioner Schroll and then Commissioner Morton?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I just want to thank staff. We at the LRPC meeting provided some feedback regarding the composition of the group that would ultimately kind of guide the creation of the Arts District and the Industrial District. And I want to credit staff on kind of revising the language here. I think it does read better and it's more clear than it was before. So thank you for to be opening to that. I think this is certainly an improvement.
Super. Commissioner Morton?
Thanks. I just had a couple of questions also about the Arts District concept. And again, I missed a lot of the earlier meetings on this. I didn't see in here, I could have missed it. I know the state of Virginia has specific enabling legislation that, you know, provides for certain incentives that local governments can adopt. Was that something that you fully exploited or I just don't see it referenced anywhere here?
Yeah. So as part of our public process, and over the two years, there was a strong interest in creating an Arts District in this area. And what you see is part, what we've added is this Snake Report, which is a report from a committee of the Working Group, which explores the idea of creating an Arts District in the area and has specific ideas about how, the organization of a group and all of those things. That report was, you know, accepted by the Working Group. However, what we want to do is make sure that we involve a broader cross-section of the county in terms of the arts groups, the property owners, et cetera, in a broader conversation and make a determination after that point in terms of what direction we're going to go. So what's outlined on page 5.1 is this two-step process where the Arts Commission and EDC would lead a process to review all the various options that might be available in terms of the setup of an Arts District, how they might grow, who might be in charge of that group, is there a nonprofit? What is the county's role? What funding should be sought, you know, or support? And many other ideas. And bring that out to the community and have a community discussion about a direction, which may result in the designation of an Arts District where there are incentives in place to facilitate and encourage the growth of arts in this area. Part of that discussion would also be what specifically are the boundaries of this district? And then a subtopic is for the county-owned parcels that are in the two-block area adjacent to Jenny Dean Park, what role do those parcels play in the development of an Arts District?
Okay. And I just had a quick question. I was involved with this Cultural Facilities Task Force that was from the Economic Development Commission and AED, and that's not referenced here in any way, but I imagine that the group that you mentioned that will be pushing this idea forward would certainly incorporate that. That was adopted pretty recently.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else on the Arts District? Any questions, clarifying positions, statements? If not, let.
Chair.
Yes, sorry.
I just, just to add some additional context, since not everybody was, you know, in the meetings and privy to a lot of it, we did have extensive conversations about the Arts District and for all the reasons that Mr. Tucker just named, the committee, actually, the subcommittee of the Working Group, led by Ms. Stombler, actually, who's sitting here in the audience, did do a really great report, benchmarking and looking at different Arts Districts throughout the country. But there's a great deal more work to be done. And as Mr. Tucker said, probably broadening the conversation and building on the work that actually, the extensive work that actually was already done. But it was a topic of a lot of conversation. And probably, I would be remiss if I didn't say, probably a little disappointment, I think, because I think that that group was hoping that their report would be adapted as the final thing. However, that's not really how we do things in Arlington sometimes, you know? We need additional input. And I do think that there's a lot of, there are more things to look into. And so I think that the way, I think that staff struck the right note here in terms of how they want to move forward.
Is the report available on the county website? So if you went to the Four Mile Run Valley Project page, you could find that report?
Yes.
It's linked in here as well.
And it's linked there. Okay, very good. Anything else on the Arts District? Then let's move on to build-two-lines, fenestration, and other design guideline items, I guess. Commissioner Schroll?
Mr. Tucker, I'm on page 410. Perfect. First off, I thank you for all the work on not just this section, but the other elements here. I think this is good work. I liked the precedent images. I think you've done a fantastic job. Just a point of clarification here in the transparency section, it notes that, you know, the building fenestration shown on the right would apply to all building facades which face a street or public space. I'm wondering if that applies to alleys. Later, a couple of slides later, you note that parking should be accessed in C and D primarily through an alley. So I'm just wondering if these fenestration would apply from an alley?
Well, typically, we think of, and this is really from our thinking from form-based code, and this is kind of, you created a flashback for me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker.
Years ago.
I hope you don't have PTSD.
So streets and plazas and the like are public spaces. Alleys typically are not. And so we have a different standard there. So that's why there's a bit of a difference there.
Okay, that's helpful. Just wanted a clarification. And, see if I have anything else. No, I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this topic? Yes?
I note also on 4.9, we still, of course, have the trees on the industrial side of Four Mile Run Drive. That had been raised at earlier meetings. This does, of course, say it's illustrative only, which is good. But in the comments, staff response is saying that, no, trees are going to be there because it's part of the Urban Forestry Master Plan, importance of including street trees in any streetscape design. Plan should be consistent with those policies. I think we really need more flexibility here. Trees are wonderful and I want them, but they're not always right everywhere. We do, of course, across Four Mile Run, where it is park space, having trees there is perfect. But given the look of this area, given the power lines above, I think that greenery is better left to the property owners to fit with their uses rather than us mandating trees be along this part of Four Mile Run Drive. Trees in this area are really not so much an amenity, they're a design element. And I think that they really should reflect what's, what's there should be better reflected, would be better reflected. be better reflected, would be better reflected without trees. That's my comment. I know it obviously wasn't accepted by staff, but I do want to put it on the record that I continue to object to having mandated trees along there. I'd rather leave that to individual design for each individual property.
Commissioner Morton.
Since we're looking at this page, I really like this idea of interim improvements. I'm kind of a proponent of this sense of experimentation and DIY. I'm just wondering what kind of review, if any, would be done before some of these interim improvements? And then, if you could elaborate a little bit on how would you judge whether they're successful or not?
In the report, we basically said we would do an operational test, as we've done with other road diet applications, such as Wilson Boulevard west of George Mason Drive. So, we would take a period of time, probably 12 to 18 months, and make sure this is really, you know, working on a safety level first and then a capacity and including not only vehicles, but pedestrians and transit. So, it's a case where we would first, you know, put it in with thermoplastic or paint and test it for a prescribed length of time before the actual permanent construction. This way, if there is an issue, it could quickly be removed or if there, such as a safety issue, or it could be modified.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes?
Just a quick direct follow-up to that question. So, is staff's intention then, I guess I heard thermoplastic in that initial one, I guess my question, I want to just sort of operationally understand this. This is a great image we have here of the interim implementation. I think we should kind of, I want to make sure, is staff's intent to do this 12-month test trial, then to leave it in place if it works or remove it? Or is staff's intention to do the 12-month test trial and then if this is an interim condition, to make the flower pots perhaps addition after 12 months to more signify the 10 to 15 to 20-plus-year temporary permanence of the condition?
Well, we really see the, the operational test being, you know, anywhere between 12 and 24 months. As far as the flower pots, the flower pots could be done in, in initial test. That was more to delineate and add some, you know, some landscaping on a temporary basis. But no, it's really to go in and test this and modify if necessary and then to build this after 18 or 24 months, something permanently.
Help me understand, what is this, build this in 18 months, something permanently look like?
Well, we have, this would be the, the operational test here and we have another illustration.
But, but I believe we were told earlier that that's not in the 10-year CIP and we're looking.
Yeah, it currently is not in the 10-year CIP. Certainly, it would probably be added the next time it is amended in two years.
So, I guess my point would be that I think our temporary interim may not be the temporary interim that we hope or envision it to be and that we should take that opportunity to engage with the community to express itself in ways. In other words, I hope that it's not concrete boring flower pots, that maybe they come in different shades of colors, that are maybe even painted. And this would be an opportunity for the community itself to express itself in that temporary Arts District. Perhaps it is in 10 years or in two years, we do have street trees or Commissioner Lynn told me might be right, there's no street trees. I simply would say that I think we should focus a little bit more community attention and not just DES engineers, which DES engineers need to draw the lines, but maybe how those little tweaks around the edges could be brought about to the community.
Yeah, I would agree with that. As far as having us actually pick out landscaping and flower pots is probably not the best idea, but certainly working with the community.
And for my fellow colleagues and for the record, if we were in Crystal City, JBG Smith would absolutely take this as an opportunity to ensure that it is incredibly artistic and thoughtful and our development community along the RB corridor would do the same. My, my hope and goal is that we, as a county, recognize that that level of organization is maybe not present. And so, we need to take that extra step of engaging before the acquisition process of purchasing the next best concrete flower pot.
So, what scope is there, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Best, for collaboration? I mean, CPHD, I think, is used to the community outreach a little bit more than DES, so I would just assume that it's good county policy for the individual silos to work together.
One of the things that.
I would anticipate you would do that.
Yeah, one of the things that we've talked about, because there has been some unreadiness about the concept of road reconfiguration, excuse me, road reconfiguration. So, these are concept, you know, illustrations. This is not design and so, design will follow. And part of that design process will involve, you know, community review. And so, that, you know, when we're, you know, I would imagine at that point of, you know, having a design, working out the kinks, the details and engaging with the community, that'll be a time, that'll be a time where we could signal, hey, and help us with, with selecting the, the planters and how do we want to go about that and involve the cultural affairs staff as well as the community and the commissions, you know, finding the way to get that done. Yes.
Is the Four Mile Run Working Group then to remain constituted, to be called upon? Or is its work, will its work be done once the, once final action is taken?
Yeah, the, the Working Group has had its last meeting. And typically, what we do, we have, you know, in addition to our, our Working Group contact list, we have over 600 individuals who are 700 individuals, I think, at this point, who are on our mailing list. And so, we would just engage everyone and, and, you know, you know, inform them, you know, we're having a meeting to talk about.
An open house.
An open house, you know, and it's time for, we certainly involve, you know, invite everyone to come in and engage with us. We certainly would work closely with the civic associations as well. So, you know, that is primarily the, the means by which we will continue our conversation with the community on the design of Four Mile Run Drive.
Super. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Lynn, tell me.
Just one follow-up. For example, we have this slide up here, rather than trees, this would be a great opportunity for, look at alternatives for there, because absolutely green is good and we want that because that's consistent with the goals of our comprehensive plan. This looks like it would be a large amount of space that could be used for bioswales, especially given we have Four Mile Run right there. A stormwater control feature all along Four Mile Run might actually be a better use of that freed-up space than tree pits and further, further number of our comprehensive plan goals. So, I throw that out you, to you as, you know, let's really think more broadly for how we can use this additional space that's being freed up from traffic or from, from cars and throw that out to the neighborhood to be considered in, as alternatives.
Very good. Anyone else? Then, let's move on to parking and transportation, but I'd actually like to take transportation, circulation issues first and then do the parking issues, if that's okay with you. So, if there are any comments on circulation, transportation, pedestrian, bicycle, vehicle. Commissioner Hughes?
My only comment is to remind staff for the record that the concrete plant in the county, well, technically in our neighboring county, is at the end of this road. So, that our normal street width should take that into account, both for the park space and for the people.
Noted. Anyone else? Okay, let, let us move on to parking. Does anyone have a comment? I actually do have, nope. So, I, I do have, Sherlington Civic Association just contacted me and I suggested a letter. They weren't able to be here this evening. And I just really wanted to raise the question of the status of 27 South Nelson and 2701 South Oakland Street. Apparently, the, and this has come up before, I'm not revealing any secrets, but can you, can you tell us what the status of that is at this point?
So, at the September Board meeting, the County Board approved an option agreement to consider acquisition of 2700 South Nelson Street, which is directly adjacent to the 3700 Four Mile Run site, which is the county-owned parcel where Theater on the Run and rehearsal spaces are. So, it's a, it's a parcel that's directly adjacent to it.
We, there was a slide, not this one, I know we're on parking regulations, but could, could you find that slide?
Which?
I saw it. Was it something that, 3.22? Does that? Is that it? 3.22?
So, there's, this is 3700. It's indicated as number three, I believe.
But is this not at the corner of Nelson and Four Mile Run Drive?
So, this is Nelson, this is Oakland Street. So, on Nelson, directly adjacent to the 3700 building is the 2700 South Nelson. And that is the.
That's where it is. Okay.
So, that's the building that the county has a three-year option agreement on. And this sort of plays into the follow-on Arts District conversation. So, as part of that conversation, we were going to look at the three parcels that the county currently owns. At this point, we can look at four parcels that the county owns and or potentially owns and how they play into the vision for this Arts District idea that, that's out there.
Okay, so that's the status quo on that. Okay.
Right. So, the, the option agreement allows the county to think about whether they want to consummate the deal with that property owner and acquire the property in, within one to three years.
That's very interesting and thank you for the clarification. Anybody else on parking? I'd like others to go before me because I do have a series of questions about parking in Sherlington, which is a vexed issue due to pre-existing conditions, site plan conditions and perhaps additional agreements, which, I'll carry on, which do make our parking structures inefficient. As I understood it from a conversation I had a year or so ago with Mr. Seldon, that the parking garage, and I forget the name of it, the parking garage behind, this is kind of behind the Carlyle, is, was built under a site plan that was connected with the building, and I can't tell you the address of the building, that the law, the tall building that's now has a Virginia Hospital Center sign on it, it's right by the highway. And the condition there was seemingly important at the time and maybe still important, that parking be provided for employees so as not to spill into the streets. The problem is that that parking, I believe, from my anecdotal experience, is underutilized. And so, that's an inefficient, it's an inefficiency. And federal realty group would love to have something changed there, but they're not, they're powerless to actually make it happen. And the county can't, can only request that the owner of the building, who is subject to the site plan, would have to come forward with a minor or some, I don't know, minor or major site plan amendment. It was also pointed out that the parking, the Campbell Street parking garage is, has an inefficiency because of the way the parking is distributed among the various users, the grocery store, the theater, public parking and the residence. So, I know that in your, in the implementation matrix, I wrote down what exactly it was, but you know which it is. It's Roman III, little III, under five, let's see, I can actually tell you. It's 5.6, Roman III. You, you talk about utilization of existing structures and it's district-wide under that, in that language. I guess my question is, do you anticipate bringing forward at least information about those inefficiencies in those garages? Is that something we can talk about down, down the line?
So, I, I think that we, we, there were, there were some competing ideas in our Certainly, county policy would suggest that we look to fully utilize parking structures where they exist as opposed to building new structures. And some suggested that there are inefficiencies in certain structures that may not necessarily be in Sherlington Village and it may be in Alexandria. But, pointing the finger that way, not, not at him, but, you know, elsewhere, over there. Look over there. So, I, I think that what we can do over the course of time, and we've set, we, we don't know how, how quickly we'd get to this, but the, the idea of examining where parking demand can be met in existing structures. Again, anecdotally, I do know that on the eastern end of, of Sherlington Village, the WETA garage at certain hours, certain times is underutilized, certainly when they're not in operation during the week. There, there may be some opportunities there. Currently, in the Quincy Street Building.
Quincy Street Garage was the one that I had in mind, I think.
As well. There, there are times when that might be available. And so.
Would that require a minor site plan amendment?
Well, actually, you know, there are various conditions on, on all of the garages there. They're all, they were built at different times under different site plan approvals. It's my understanding for both the Quincy Street garages, both the WETA one and the one on the opposite side of the street, that in off-peak hours, they're generally available.
It doesn't say that on the, it doesn't, it doesn't indicate that they are available. So, I, when I am a retail customer and I am winding my way up and then down and up and down, I am a law-abiding citizen, it doesn't invite me to park there and I don't.
Yeah.
So, if that could be clarified?
Sure. And I think that's something we could, we could look at.
Okay.
You know, in addition to the things that we're going to do on Four Mile Run Drive, some of the short-term things that, that DES is going to do to examine parking in and around Jenny Dean Park, those are the things that we can look at over time to sort of expand options for people.
That.
Where possible.
Madam Chair, just as a follow-up to that or maybe a further clarification, so if you're looking in the implementation matrix on 5.10, C2A, develop policies and practices to address parking on a district-wide basis, is, is that sentence, is that recommendation or implementation task, does that assume a parking study?
Yes, that's.
I think that's really your question.
Well, it's what I was getting to.
Yeah.
Please.
The, the parking study is on 5.6, on the top of the matrix, little, little three.
Well, I, I just wanted, I actually was, we talked about this, a couple of commissioners, perform further parking analysis, which is, indicates a parking study.
So, I want to.
What, what had bothered me was when the Civic Association President raised this with me, I thought, okay, so, we know we're going to have 250 more spaces by doing the diagonal. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, actually, no. As far as on the south side, it would increase at about 12 spaces. I think the 250 was really.
Where is that from?
I think that was sort of an overall composite.
From the district-wide?
District-wide.
That you could squeeze 250 more spaces of on-street parking. Is that the idea? Because I was trying to understand, okay, that's the incremental amount, let's say it's 250, you're going to show me that in a minute. Well, what's the need? What, what is the demand? What's the need? is the demand? What's the need? How does that change over time? Are we going to see that in your parking study? It's, it's kind of vague in the implementation matrix, and I wanted some clarity there.
Well, certainly staff, DES staff now, has been doing some parking analysis, and they're going to come up with an interim plan later this month and next month, and share it with the business community, and also with the Civic Association. Realizing, a lot of that is taking some of the existing spaces that are not regulated.
The truck, where the trucks park?
That's, that's part of it. But there's a whole series of areas, such as what I call the dog park, parking lot.
Yes.
Between Oakland and Nelson.
I know it well.
You know it well. And certainly, to put some regulation there, to have some turnover. So people aren't parking there, you know, all day long, or for several days at a time. And also, some of the commercial parking really is more storage. This is storage that would be, you know, right now in Four Mile Run, and often these are large commercial vehicles that are parked there for days, weeks, and even months on end. So it's really, we do plan on adding some additional spaces on, on street, but really to manage the parking that's there, that's by and large not managed, or sort of there's a whole mix of regulation.
Absolutely. I completely support that, and it's absolutely called for. My, my question is, will we, will you be able to do a study, or do you intend to do a study, to get some parameters about what, what the needs are, and are they being met? I mean, you're describing an incremental process whereby unmanaged areas will be managed, striping will be changed, all to the good. But when a civic association comes forward and says, well, perhaps, we're so desperate, or it suggests, we're so desperate that we like to use, we'd like to look for new surface parking, or maintain what surface parking there might be, and raises these two properties, 2700 Nelson, South Nelson Street, then you think, well, is the need that desperate? Are, are we, I mean, I have been, I have had problems parking in Sherrlington, and I think others have. There are peak times, lunchtime, dinnertime, movie time, perhaps. So I, I keep wanting to know whether you can do a study that suggests what the capacity is and what the need is.
Well, certainly. And we're going to have some interim recommendations really out later this month and next month, but that doesn't mean that, you know, every, you know, year or two, it couldn't be revisited, and, you know, as far as adjusted.
So that you, you will come up with maybe a global, an estimate of what, what the need is, what the supply-demand parameters, generally, in addition to rationalizing spaces and managing them better on street?
That's correct. But we, it's one of these things where we can't go and adjust things, you know, every month, or every six months, but certainly, you know-
No, no.
Certainly every year or two, things can be studied and readjusted.
To get a global number, to get a sort of global estimate, that's kind of what I'm wanting to, to see.
Well, we have-
Or is that not possible?
No, it is possible.
Okay.
And as far as looking at, at the park, of course, what we have with the zoning code prescribes of being like 67 or 68, you know, spaces to serve the park, but certainly, you know, after that is in, and we're kind of seeing the actual, you know, needs of that, or what it really generates, it can be readjusted.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes?
Just an immediate follow-up. So it's my understanding from this conversation that staff's intention is to begin to apply limits in the future to this parking area that would preclude the long-term commercial sort of vehicle nature there?
Well, the, the idea of that is really to move it a little further to the west, and not to have it concentrated right on Four Mile Run, adjacent to Jenny Dean Park.
Understood. I guess my, my comment there is that I think, should staff go through this process and, and come out with, which is normally a staff-generated process, it's not a community-engaged process, that staff should also acknowledge that the residual impacts of this decision will be far-reaching, and that the, the owners of those vehicles will look for the opportunities around them to meet that unmet need of parking those vehicles in the long run, which happens to be free parking adjacent to public land throughout any area. The reason being, that's the only area that those vehicles are allowed to park. So my comment to staff is that should they engage in that process, they should be flexible to both the surrounding communities, NOC, Sherrlington, Douglas Park, and the others, to review any adverse impacts to those neighborhoods. In other words, instead of moving their dump truck to Fairfax County, which is what your proposal basically implies, which we do, too, for parking our buses, they will move them possibly next to parks up in NOC, or anywhere else that they can find a free parking spot without time limitations, adjacent to public land, because that's the only part that they're allowed to park on. So my encouraging part to staff is, don't make this decision thinking that you can only study this area. You need to be mindful of the adjacent impacts it will cause.
So noted.
Very good. Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the comment matrix in the staff report, sort of the last two pages, staff notes in response to a comment that the county board direction to staff was, you know, to not accommodate a parking garage, but also not to accommodate surface parking on top of open space or parkland. I'm wondering if staff can comment, kind of in response, in response to the chair's comments about whether current, that, that direction from the county board about surface parking, whether staff would take that as a prohibition to expanding it to these kind of other parcels, things that are currently pervy, impervious. Would staff be thinking that if they got knocked down, we wouldn't be expanding surface parking to those? Or where is staff kind of on that now? Because this, obviously, the direction you got initially wasn't regarding these parcels.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's two points. One is, you know, certainly that staff should not be looking to address parking needs with creating parking garages. The second point really relates to the park master plan, that within the park, and, you know, understanding the desire for the various amenities and spaces, that space within the park shouldn't be sacrificed, you know, for parking. So there is two separate points.
Sure.
With regard to other parcels that the county owns, we are, you know, we, we want to have this upcoming discussion about arts district, and within that, how should the county's parcels be used? And so that's a perfect opportunity to talk about the various options, whether the buildings on them stay, whether they are removed and, and parking is created, whether they become open space that complements the, the various activities that happen around, you know, plazas or other things that, that complement the, the uses that are around them. Those are open for discussion. So we, we don't have any, you know, insight into where that conversation will lead, but certainly, that, all of that is on the table.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. For me, and I've shared this with some of my colleagues, I, I don't think if we knock down these buildings, I want to see surface parking here. We're close, these parcels are not inside the floodplain, they're just outside of it. But I don't think we want to be increasing impervious surface or replacing it with that in its entirety, understanding the parking needs here, but not wanting to see it kind of just parked over. I would be opposed to that. Obviously, that decision is not before us tonight, but, and I know that staff didn't have to wrestle with that initially, because this is a recent development. So, but I just wanted to put that down as sort of a placeholder for me, at least.
Commissioner Weir?
Yeah, I want to, I want to take Commissioner Schroll's point just a little bit farther. I've, I've said somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but only somewhat, that I think that the phrase "surface parking" should be explicitly prohibited by the zoning ordinance. I would be extremely uncomfortable, I am extremely uncomfortable by any, at any suggestion that any county acquisitions here be dedicated to surface parking. And I want to put one particular sheen, contextual veneer on this. I think that, and Commissioners Guerin and McSweeney, please speak up if I'm, if I'm incorrect here, but I think whatever consensus there was, as there exists, as to what to do with Jenny Dean Park, exists because of a premise that, that the land between Nelson and Oakland would not be, was not within the realm of consideration for program park space. But I think that that premise itself is deeply challenged, and deeply opposed by a sizable share of the people who were at that table, possibly even the majority, who just became a silent minority upon being told it's just outside of the realm of consideration. So I, I think, you know, we know, we know, it's been mentioned here tonight, we know that Sherrlington is overparked. The reason that those three garages, three garages in Sherrlington appear to be underparked is because of the management of the facilities, not because of the actual facilities themselves.
Pre-existing agreements.
I, I understand that there are signed agreements, right? Yeah, yeah.
For the barriers to overcome.
Right, right. No, you're, you're right to point that out, but I, I just, you know, this is, this is space that if, if we're going to get it, it needs to be either, you know, multi-use, or, or, I can't remember the phrase that Kerry Johnson would always use, co-, co-, help me out, it's-
Co-locate, yeah.
Co-location, yeah. But, but surface parking, I mean, Commissioner Schroll is right, but I, I, I can't let him just go right up to the line. Like, the, the point has to be brought all the way.
So then let me just sign my name on to that, both of your comments. I agree. Planning Commission, at this point, really shouldn't be saying, oh, let's look for surface parking. The reason it came up was the letter from Civic Association, and I wanted to explore a little bit more. I mean, my, the big question for me, after thinking about it, was, well, what's the need? What's the demand? We, we don't actually know until we deal with some of the difficulties, the pre-existing agreements on the three parking garages, the overpark nature, and the, the truck parking. So there's, there's really a lot of work to do, and I look forward to monitoring and seeing what, what you come up with, and how we can rationalize the parking both on-street and in the existing garages. I would just, I think disagree, and I may be wrong. I, I, did the county board actually take off the table the notion that those properties that we saw in pink, I think, were not to be parked? I thought they took off the table the idea that they should only be parked, that they could be a mix of uses there, including open space. Is that correct?
That's correct. They, they declined to take a stance that affirmatively created open space on, on those, on those parcels, but rather, you know, opened those up for discussion as part of the arts district public process.
Then I think that, that really is the response to the Civic Association, but more to come. I mean, we've, we've got a lot more to do. Commissioner McSweeney?
At, at the risk of belaboring this conversation, I, I did want to mention that not only did the county board make that comment at the work session, but actually, there were a series of votes that the working group actually took. And one of them was about structured parking in and around, well, in this area. And I don't remember the numbers, but the majority said no. So just, so you know, it's not just the county board, I think the working group themselves actually took a vote on this.
I don't think that was proposed in this recent letter from Civic Association.
And I was going to mention the recent, the letter from Ms. Wilson, because in it, she mentioned something else, and she's not really talking, I think, about just a surface parking lot. I think what she's talking about is the other sort of competing need, or the thing we've, we talked about from the very early beginnings of, of this working group, was the need for some indoor recreational space as well. We have some outdoor recreational space, but we don't really have any indoor recreational space. And so we've talked a lot about the arts district, you know, sort of taking up perhaps some of that, but, you know, again, the co-location of perhaps recreation and artistic uses. And then if you happen to have the first floor of that be parking, then that would be okay if you build a building on top of it.
And I think that's what she was thinking, but that's all to, to come. But I think that was a, anybody else want to join this discussion, or can we close parking? Let us do that.
I need, I know, I'm sorry, I need to say one more thing.
Yes.
And that is just, as a follow-up to Mr. Hughes, the conversation about the, the trucks that park along Four Mile Run, I don't want it to be lost either, that we have some people who live nearby, who make their livelihoods by, by owning and running trucks. And so we didn't necessarily, we, we wanted some sensitivity and some amount of parking to be available for them. Now, I don't know how you know that they're in the neighborhood versus not. I mean, I think that's something that you'll be looking at as well, but we, we didn't want to run everybody out of, of parking from Four Mile Run, especially the people who probably can't afford to park in other jurisdictions.
And that really was not staff's intention. Our staff's intention really was to shift it a little bit further to the west, and, and still provide.
I would just-
Okay. It's also very hard to sort of analyze where these vehicles are coming and going. Number one, they're typically not Arlington-registered. If they have an Arlington decal, which we still have that through the next year, it's a lot easier. Often, these vehicles have, you know, other state license plates, whether it be Maryland, or they're somewhere else from Virginia and being parked there. And we do notice, though, there's, there hasn't really been a pattern of the same vehicles parked, you know, night after night and then moved. Often, these vehicles are there for days or weeks upon time, and then they kind of disappear. So it's kind of more vehicle storage, but we really are having a hard time tracking, you know, are they a resident who lives in Arlington, or in a nearby part of Arlington, or are they just being stored there, you know, for some kind of, you know, commercial purposes and then moved?
I would just mention, and this brings up the whole, you know, school, who lives, you know, the schools conversation about who lives in the county and who doesn't. There are reasons, and very good ones, that people sometimes have out-of-state plates that, that would still be in the county. So there are reasons for that.
And we realize that, it's just kind of hard to track, are these, you know, residents that, you know, have a Maryland work vehicle and need to park it, or is it just there randomly?
A daunting task. Anyone else on parking? All right, let's quickly move on to, let's talk about the conflict with the date. Mr. Tucker, what, what can we do about that? We can't move the planning commission meeting.
Right. It's my understanding that, at this point, there may, there's at least two items on the agenda, this item and Reed School, and there may be a third item. I think in the past where there's been a conflict of this nature, one of the things that we could do is move, make sure that this item is heard last. So-
Yes, okay.
At least there's an opportunity for the Civic Association meeting to take place, and people can dash over later on in the evening and, and sort of catch up. So I don't know if there's just one more item. I know we're confirmed, I think the Reed School is going to be on the agenda for November. There may be a, a second item related to the Master Transportation Plan. I'm not sure that that is firmly on the agenda.
Okay.
But we can certainly make sure that this item is the, the last item of the night.
Okay. Does that sound, sound reasonable?
Well, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't know how likely it is that people are going to go to, be able to get to multiple meetings in the same, in the same night. So I, I think if there's any way that you could try to move that meeting, I think it probably would be appreciated by NOC, understanding that a lot of the nights are jam-packed with meetings anyway.
Is it, is it that the Civic Association has its meeting on that night, and they can't move to a different date?
I, I don't know what they can or can't do. I know the request was made.
Okay.
The planning commission moved.
That the, I've spoken about that to Mr. Duffy. I think I did that in connection with, I, I'm not remembering exactly what, and he looked at me with daggers in his eyes. So I'm not going to erase that. I don't think it's possible. But if you could work with NOC Civic Association to, to try to find some accommodation, that would be very good. Commissioner Guerin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So right now, looking at my calendar, I know we have two nights for PC in November, the 5th and the 7th.
It may be that we will not have enough sufficient items to fill two nights. I, I think that's the thinking right now. Commissioner Hughes?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have a question, Madam Chair. Has the public announcement confirming and notifying the public hearing for November 5th already been published?
No, it shouldn't have been yet, yet, because we haven't had our agenda meeting with CPHD leadership. So not yet. And-
Madam Chair.
When are we having it?
That's the 24th.
Uh, uh-
25th or 26th?
Uh, Ms. Ms. Smith, maybe you can help us out with that. Yeah, but no, the answer is no, it has not been advertised yet.
So, Madam Chair.
Move the meeting?
No, I was not suggesting to move the meeting, I was simply suggesting that at your discretion, I believe.
Have the meeting on the 2nd.
It is when you would like to call the meeting, and so, knowing that we've all reserved the 5th and the 7th in the case of a carryover, I prefer Wednesday meetings, so, you know, I know I would like to have it on Wednesday, but it's for your discretion, ma'am, and that's my only comment.
Ms. Smith, would you, would you like to comment?
Yes, I was just going to say that I think we all understand the request, and I think we can all take it back and try and.
Okay.
Figure out what the schedule is, and I don't think we need to make that determination this evening.
Very good. We've, we've opened up some, some questions that you can come back with an answer. Okay. The dog park was something I put on the agenda. We did have an amendment, a motion, and I don't know what the disposition of it was. I think the county board signed on to it, maybe not, but there is land that really is county land that's being encroached upon by private operator of the car place. I don't know what they do exactly. Can you just give us a status report on, on addressing that?
Yes, actually, staff has followed up on this, and we've discovered that there are a number of parcels that there, there do seem to be encroachments abutting the, the dog park. So park staff and DS staff and the county attorney are working through finding solutions for that, so that's something that we're, we're just actively working on.
Super, thank you. Okay, thank you for that. Very good. We had a final agenda item implementation, but I'm not sure if there's any additional comments anybody wants to make. Commissioner? Okay, carry on.
Other commissioners have sort of raised this, and I think Commissioner Ricks, and I think Commissioner Hughes did as well, which is, there's a lot of great implementation actions here, and most of them have CIP next to them. And so I just, we don't have many people in the audience this evening, but I just want to make sure that we remind ourselves, and anybody watching as well, that this is going to take a long time to implement. Most of our plans get achieved because we have incentive-based zoning, and we trade the achievement of these projects for increases in density. We're not going to be doing that here, and it's going to be based on passing bonds every two years to achieve this plan. And so it doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it, but just to note that. The other thing is, because so many of these have CIP based next to them, I think it would be useful to have some idea of the, how much each of them costs, sort of as, kind of like what you see on Yelp, like one, $1 sign, $2 signs, $3 signs. But some way of saying, you know, that this is the most expensive thing, or it, but it may be something we really want to do, and we might want to have that in the CIP, or this is something cheaper, maybe we could do a couple of these and next CIP. Obviously, they need to go through planning and, and design, and we don't know how much they're actually going to cost, so it's appropriate to have some high-level thing here. I appreciate the effort that's gone into this, these are great actions. I don't want to in any way belie the work that's gone into creating them, I think they're great. I do like the road diet, I like the use of tactical urbanism, I will join with Commissioner Morton on that. So it's encouraging, but I just want to make sure that we're setting appropriate expectations for what we're going to achieve in the decades to come.
I think that's a fair comment. Does staff see any way to alter the implementation matrix to indicate or prioritize? Well, I guess you're not asking for priority, you're just asking for some indication of how the cost, small meeting and large, is that something you, you think you can add?
I think there's something we can, we can look into, but I, I personally don't want to edit the, anyway. No, we can, we can certainly look into that.
Think about it, okay, very good. Is there any, yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. I, I do want to sort of amplify Commissioner Schroll's comments, because I think that they were excellently point, or brought forward. Yelp does have $5 signs, and, you know, that's any number, but it's also important to note, and I think this is where we, as a community, need to think about things and be careful. Vernado, or JBG now, does this all the time in, in Crystal City, placemaking, the identity of a place, and the responsibility of communities to brand themselves, it's important. And what's different about this area is that almost, well, not all, but a great deal of these properties are abutted by county properties. It's us, we're branding ourselves in a lot of ways here, that we don't brand in other areas, the RB corridor, the Roslyn Sector Plan, the Crystal City Sector Plan, those are all private developments. So when we think about how we implement it, we should, we should be, you know, as aggressive in placemaking for ourselves as we expect for our business community to be for themselves, because it is about how great Arlington is. And so I, I just want to amplify Commissioner Schroll's comments, this is going to take a while to implement, and I think staff needs to also recognize, and I encourage you for the record, that there is a community process outside of the engineers, and we have to be mindful to the great ideas of the community that will be brought forward.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a comment? Commissioner McSweeney?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion. Let's go for it.
I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached resolution, attachment one of the staff report to the PC dated, to the planning commission, dated October 1st, 2018, to authorize advertisement of public hearings at the November 5th, at the November Planning Commission meeting, and November 17th, 2018 County Board meeting, to consider the adoption of the draft Four Mile Run policy framework.
Second, second by Commissioner Garen.
If I could, I specifically did not say November 5th.
Yes.
So that we could come up with a different date. And if I could just mention, so this was a very long process, and I think a lot of people, you said something earlier about you think it was a very contentious process, and I think a lot of people did come with their own ideas. But, you know, as we often see with public process in Arlington, yes, people do come with their own agendas, people come with their own, you know, sort of pre-baked ideas about what needs to happen on this site, but, you know, I think everybody cared very deeply about this, this site, about Four Mile Run Valley, and I think there is definitely wisdom in the group, because at the end of the day, I think what has been produced is, is, is a good, is a good report, and certainly, we have a lot of implementation actions to, to propel us forward, to, to really transform and yet honor the history of, of this site. So I do want to really thank staff, because this report has undergone a lot of changes, tremendous changes in the last couple of months, and I, I think you've done a tremendous job really responding to everything, you know, every meeting, there were, there were a lot of points that, that people made and things they wanted to be, they wanted to change, and I will say to staff's credit, they, they kept a matrix of issues, and they really were very faithful to the comments that were made. So I, I think it's really important to acknowledge the work of staff on this, and also certainly the work of our chair, who isn't with us, but Charles Monfort, a former planning commissioner, and the two co-chairs, who also ably led this, and everybody. I mean, as a result of, again, this contentious process, we now have a, a business, they're not really a bid, but there's a group of businesses that now meet regularly, led by, you know, a business owner in the area. We also have a business owner of New District Brewing, who has created now this Valley Fest, and has actually, at the last Valley Fest, which was just a couple of weekends ago, he commissioned a public art. So it was, it's, it's really taking on a life of its own, I think, as, as arts districts do, that, you know, the best ones grow organically, and this one certainly is. So I'm really excited to see what's going to happen, and as, as the implementation tasks are carried out, and as this valley continues to develop.
Does anybody else want to make a comment? I would just associate myself with, with everything you said. We were looking for, or, or, and just to add and amplify the last comment you made, we were looking for an organic growth in the area based on what's there now. I just think the, maybe I'm misguided in this idea, but it seems to me that 2,700 and 2,701 Nelson and Oakland, that, that is, it fills out that, that block. So there was a bit of incentive there, not like, not an incentive we're used to seeing, where we say you can get more density, and that, that's a real incentive, or the kind of incentive in, of, on Columbia Pike with the Form-Based Code. But I'm, I'm encouraged by a number of the incremental steps that, the many of them that, that have been taken here, so, bravo, I would say that. If there is no other discussion, no other comment, no amendments, let's vote. All in favor of the main motion? Raise your hand. We are unanimous, we have no opposition and no abstention. We are, this concludes the public agenda, where we'll stay very quickly for Commissioner Hughes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the planning commission approve and block the meeting minutes for a meeting dated September 6th, September 11th, September 13th, 2018.
Second.
Can we, can we do them separately? I mean, I can't, I was not here on this.
So we're going to do that rule, okay.
What did you say?
I move the planning commission approve the meeting minutes for the September 6th meeting, dated 2008, 6th, September 6th, 2018.
Second by Commissioner Schroll, all in favor? Opposed? Abstain?
I move the planning commission approve the meeting minutes for the September 11th, 2018 meeting.
Second by Commissioner Schroll, all in favor? Opposed? Any abstention?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the planning commission approve the meeting minutes for September 13th, 2018.
Second by Commissioner Schroll. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, two abstentions. Ah, three, very good, okay. Thank you for precipitating that, that item. Let, let me find my, geez, geez. I, I think we have, sorry, it got buried. Let's do, is there a, is there a staff report? Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, I was a little confused about September 6th. There were many public speakers, and that's not recorded in the minutes, and apparently, I hadn't realized that that is not the place for recording or memorializing the public comments. That occurs in our letter, so I share that with you, I don't know if you were, I, I was misguided, I was not, I was not clear on that, but I'm, I am now. So is there a, do we have a staff report? No staff report. Committee reports, site plan review committee. We, Commissioner Schroll, has, we have, well, let's just review, we've got the, Commissioner McSweeney.
The Best Western.
The Best Western.
Meeting next Monday.
For walking tour.
This coming Monday, with a walking tour at 6:00, and then we're meeting on the site at 7:00.
Okay, very good. There is forthcoming a, I haven't, I haven't heard about it, so I think in the, through the end of the year, this is probably the last SPRC, although we could be surprised. However, there is, we will see many more site plans next year, so I'm told. That's all I have to say. Long-range, Commissioner Yakimini is not here, so I will pass, pass over that SOC report.
There's nothing coming forward for us at this point.
Okay, PFRC, Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's start by just noting that there is an LRPC meeting on Tuesday on the bike element.
Okay, thank you.
Master Transportation Plan.
Thank you.
So please come to that. In terms of PFRC, we met yesterday night, last night, to consider the use permit for Reed School, and that will be before us and the Transportation Commission in November. And then we're also working on the Ed Center as well, so we had our first meeting last month, and then our next meeting just got moved, so hopefully everybody got the notification on that, is now October 30th. It's a Tuesday, October 30th, and that will be at Washington Lee and the Little Theater, and there will be a walking tour preceding that, and it starts at 6:00 PM at the Ed Center, and then, so if you can make that, great, and then walk.
Can you repeat the date, please?
It's, that PFRC will be October, it's Tuesday, October 30th, starts at 6:00 PM with a walking tour of the Ed Center, and then the meeting itself will be in the Little Theater at Washington Lee, starting at 7:00 PM. It does, yes. Schools had a conflict with their architects on that date.
Can you just remind us, I understood that Commissioner Hughes was going to step down on this topic, and Commissioner McSweeney?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So, yes, Commissioner Hughes will be, or is rolling off of PFRC, since we are now conclude, or we've now almost concluded Reed School, so we want to thank him for his service the past few years on public facilities review committee, and yes, Commissioner McSweeney joined us the other night to, to kick off the Ed Center, and will be continuing on as one of the planning commissioners on PFRC, along with Commissioner Wantelme.
Super, thank you for reminding us. Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group?
Again, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group has not met yet, but there is a new application that is coming forward in the future, but it's not yet ready for the AUG, so.
Super. My report, I would just thank you really very much for the discussion we had on consensus last time, it was extremely helpful, comments I got, improved the document. It's now in the capable hands of Ms. Bowling, and when she has time, sometimes this, this month, she'll format it, it'll come back to us one more time to take a, a look, but I think paid political advertisement, I just think it's really important to get, to get information about what the SPRC is, what it does, what our role is, a little more into the sort of minds of people in the county. I think it, if it works, it will help us when we do RSPRC. With that, and if there are no more comments, we're adjourned for October. Who represents at board? Do we know?
This month?
Yeah, who is representing at board?